With that, I will call the meeting of the State Bar Board of Trustees to order on May 19th. I have the role, Madam Secretary.
Rotten.
Here.
Chen.
Here.
Cisneros.
Here.
De La Cruz.
Here.
Dylan.
Here.
Duran.
Here.
Salag. Shelby. I see trustee Shelby is connecting to audio. Oh, and trustee Salag is also joining. Okay, I'll go back. Salag?
Here.
Shelby?
Present.
So. Stallings?
Here.
Tony? Tony?
Present.
Thank you. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, members of the board. Good afternoon, staff and those of you who are joining us. This is a remote meeting. We are still, you know, we're still experiencing the, the effects of the pandemic here in California. And so we appreciate all of your understanding and forbearance with the technology that we're all used to now, but I will, for the good of the order, still make some reminders about the use of the technology for our meetings today and tomorrow. Before I call for public comment, let me just remind folks that if you're participating by Zoom, you should have a function for virtually raising your hand. It's a hand icon and should appear at the bottom center of your screen. If you wish to address the, the board, please click on the hand icon at the appropriate time and state bar staff will call on you in the order of the hands are raised. If you're participating by phone and not video, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine, that is the star key and then the number nine. Again, when you do that, star, state bar staff will be alerted that you'd like to make a comment and we'll call on you at the appropriate time. We're in a little bit of a hybrid format insofar as several of our members are, well, actually, all of our members are at a location that is accessible to the public. So I am in my law firm's Ontario office. I don't have any members of the public here with me today. But I will take a pause here to check with my colleagues on the board to see if there are any members of the public present there with you who wish to address the board at any time, please do let me or staff know so that we can make sure to accommodate those folks. Housekeeping item, if you don't mind, I wanted to just give folks a sense of some, not changes, but some of the ordering of our agenda. Item 701, our agenda today is, for today and tomorrow, excuse me, is the update to the board on the paraprofessionals program. We are asking that folks allow us to take that item up first thing tomorrow morning so that people who need to give a report to the board may do so according to their schedules. Certainly, if any member of the public is here and would like to address the board on that item today, you may do so. However, you may wish to wait until tomorrow morning as well, since that is when the board will be taking up that item number 701. I'm going to move 707 towards the end of our day today before closed session. And then items 710, which is the SB 211 case processing standards update, will also be taken up tomorrow. As the trustees will have noted, and anybody in the public who's seen our agenda, we do have quite a bit of business on our open and our closed session agenda for today and tomorrow. And so we will try and catch some time towards the end of the afternoon today to start our closed session items. With that, let me just check with Ms. Wilson to make sure there's nothing I've missed by way of housekeeping. Looks like not. Okay, good. This is a time for public comment where the board welcomes and encourages members of the public to address us on any item of business within the state bar's jurisdiction. Due to time restrictions, we're going to ask that folks limit themselves to no more than three minutes. And when you are recognized by staff, please go ahead and unmute yourself. And we're here to hear, ready to listen. I see that we have four hands raised so far. Madam Secretary, is it you who will be recognizing folks?
Yes.
Great.
Okay, first on the list, we have GK Client. GK Client, your mic has been enabled and you have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. This is Amber Galloway. Um, I, some of you I've spoken to already, a lot of you I haven't. My family are sorry, um, I'm, my family was represented by Girardi Keys. And I wanted to ask if you guys can put on the agenda for the next meeting for consideration, if you guys can create like a Girardi Keys victim or witness protection program. And I can go further into why, but I'm not sure if that's an appropriate thing to even do right now.
Ms. Miss Galloway, I mean, you're certainly, you're free to address the board in any way that you feel comfortable. Our staff has taken note of your request for an agenda item at a future time. If there's something more you feel like we need to know in a public setting, we're happy to hear you. If you're more comfortable speaking with either Ms. Wilson or me or another member of our staff in private, we'll be sure to connect with you.
Yeah, I will, I'll reach out to you guys in private about, about the details of that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the list, we have Claire Solot. Claire Solot, you have the mic and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Claire Solot and I am one of the co-founders of the Legal Service Funders Network. As you all know, one of the priorities of our network is to increase access to justice. Earlier this week, I sent to all of you four different documents, including the most recent lack LSFN new attorney hiring survey, the LSFN 2022 fellowship update, as well as the LSFN observations with regards to the provisional life insurance program and future licensure pathways. The LSFN strongly encourages this board to act now to recommend that the California Supreme Court extend the duration of provisional license until new licensure options become available, rather than having the program terminate in just two weeks' time. It's hard to imagine that at the time that this board recommended the creation of the provisional license that we would be in the situation we're still in with regards to COVID. It's also hard to imagine that this board is entertaining later today a recommendation with regards to the overview and disciplinary actions, the PLLs, that would go into action in theory today when there's only two weeks left of the program. So in the interest in increasing access to justice and giving the PLLs an opportunity to continue the work that they're doing, as the state bar considers other licensing options, including a revision to the bar exam, as well as non-exam pathways, I would ask that the hundreds of PLLs that currently are working under a PLL license be given the opportunity to continue to do the valuable work they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solot.
Next, we have Jessica Juarez. Jessica, you have the mic and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon to all members of the board. My name is Jessica Juarez and I'm a provisionally licensed lawyer. I respectfully request that the Board of Trustees draft a petition to the California Supreme Court for the extension of the provisional licensure program and provide a full pathway to licensure for all provisionally licensed lawyers. This is set to expire in 12 days and it affects not only our clients and our organizations or firms that we work with, but it also affects the employment and livelihood of at least 250 to 300 PLLs out there, including myself. I acknowledge and am grateful for all of the work that the Board of Trustees did in October 2020 to make the PLL program a reality. I also applaud all of the work that the Blue Ribbon Commission is currently doing right now to create a non-exam pathway to licensure. But the class of 2020 is in need of a progressive solution right now. The class of 2020 graduated in the midst of witnessing 1 million American deaths over the course, excuse me, of 26 short months. The class that likely contracted COVID in this time period and still continue to work and service its clients and remain active as provisionally licensed lawyers. Unprecedented times required unprecedented actions. And these unprecedented times created a place for the PLL program to, to exist. And it motivated the state bar and yourselves to find these creative solutions and experiments with, with the alternative pathway to licensure. I ask you now to be creative and create more unprecedented actions to protect us, PLLs. We are not requesting a diploma privilege to this board. I am not asking for a free pass. We are requesting a pathway to licensure after a year and a half of supervised legal work as lawyers, which amounts to at least 2,000 to 3,000 hours of service to our clients. Now, we have all computed all mandatory MCLEs that a new attorney is required to do. I have received exemplary reviews from my supervisors and there have been no disciplinary actions that have been initiated against me personally. I have had to balance my work and personal life responsibilities throughout my term as a PLL and attempt to find time to study for a bar exam that was not only changed to online at, you know, in October of 2020 and 2021, but I now have to learn a new format to take an in-person exam in July 20, in July, in a few months. I have had to consider the potential risk of taking an in-person exam during the pandemic. As a first generation student.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. As a first generation student and professional and single parent, I have had to evaluate the risk of exposure for me and my child if I sit for the exam in person. We have clearly shown that we are competent and that the public has benefited from our work and engagement in the sector. It is the ethical thing to do. I think it is the just thing to do. I think it's the equitable thing to do. I think it is the right thing to do to provide the class of 2020 a full pathway to licensure after a year and a half.
Thank you very much, Ms. Juarez.
Sorry. Next, we have Charlie Gillig. Charlie Gillig, your mic has been enabled. You have three minutes.
Hey, good afternoon. I'm Charlie Gillig, Vice President at Neighborhood Legal Services of Los Angeles. Thank you for letting me comment today as I'm unavailable tomorrow. We address the paraprofessionals program. I do want to first commend the state bar and that working group in their efforts to try and solve the access to justice crisis. They put in a tremendous amount of time, effort and thought into the proposal. However, too many concerns remain to support the recommendations as they stand. Many of these concerns have been raised in the submitted written comments, which I'm not going to repeat here. But I do wish to comment briefly on one of the starkest examples which could create harm for legal consumers in California. And that is the recent modification to the recommendations to include undocumented immigrants in the collateral criminal work. This modification has the potential for serious immigration harm to individuals who receive assistance under the paraprofessional program. It's a highly niche practice area that even experienced collateral criminal experts stay away from unless they're specialized and regularly practice in crossover immigration issues. For example, when vacated relief is required for a non-citizen's conviction, an immigration attorney must step in to reopen a past criminal case and negotiate a new immigration safe plea deal with the prosecutor. This type of assistance requires extensive experience. We're deeply concerned that additional training will be insufficient in spotting the difference between vacator and exponment relief. The importance of choosing vacator over exponment cannot be overstated. Failing to assist a client with a vacator can result in loss of liberty, family separation, and ultimately deportation. There are numerous similar examples throughout the recommendations regarding many substantive areas. And we believe further consideration of potential consumer harm is essential before proceeding with any program. We ask the Board of Trustees not to approve the advancement of the program at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillig.
Next, we have Sebastian Bendek. Sebastian, you have the mic and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon to all members of the board for hearing my public comment. I respectfully request that the Board of Trustees draft a petition to the California Supreme Court for the extension of the provisional licensure program and provide a full pathway to licensure for all provisionally licensed lawyers. As it stands right now, the employment and livelihood of 250 to 300 provisionally licensed lawyers is set to expire June 1, 2022. As you know, this program was created in response to the coronavirus pandemic. This decision not only affects the PLLs, but the public at large. The public interest is in jeopardy. I currently represent people facing evictions in the city of Los Angeles. I believe that all PLL should be given the option to be fully licensed with a minimum of 300 supervised practice and a positive evaluation from their supervising attorney. Currently, I've performed over 2,500 hours of practice time and over 1,000 hours of actual case time. I waive the rest of my time. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Bendek.
Next, we have Patrick. Patrick, your mic has been enabled. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Patrick Quinn. As a 2020 law school graduate, I would like to personally thank the State Bar of California and the Board of Trustees for implementing the provisional license program during the unprecedented time of the global pandemic of COVID-19. I first became aware of the provisional license program during the darkest days of my life. I graduated during the pandemic and shortly after developed adult epilepsy while studying diligently for the bar in June of 2020. My epilepsy resulted in two grand mal seizures, having kidney failure, neurological issues, and heard of other problems. However, the provisional license was the boost, was the boost morale I needed mentally, spiritually, and financially. I became a provisionally licensed lawyer beginning on December 9, 2020. Since this date, I have taken my duties of the court, my clients, and my supervising attorney very serious. Over the course of the last 16-plus months while being provisionally licensed, I've committed nearly 3,000-plus hours to the program. My endeavors in provisional license program have committed to the specific area of criminal defense. This opportunity through the provisional license program has allowed me to serve hundreds of people in the great state of California. I understand this temporary license doesn't create an automatic right to practice law indefinitely. However, I do believe the experience gained through the provisional license program has led myself and many other provisionally licensed lawyers to display being competent enough to earn an opportunity to become fully licensed under the state bar of California. This bar, this program was established under exceptional circumstances, and I believe these same exceptional circumstances would justify the state bar of California in creating a pathway for the provisionally licensed lawyers to gain full admission to the state bar of California. The livelihoods of the provisionally licensed lawyers and our clients' interests should be taken into significant consideration. There's a public interest also to significantly consider here. The provisionally licensed lawyers who work for the public will be forced to cease representing their clients come June 1, 2022. With many changes regarding the administering of the California State Bar and the creation of the provisional license program, I respectfully request the Board of Trustees to petition the Supreme Court, the Supreme Court of California and the State Bar of the, of California to create a process for the current provisionally licensed lawyers to become fully admitted to the State Bar of California, making the provisionally licensed lawyer program full circle. Thank you for your time and your consideration this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn.
Next, we have Paul Grow, Law Offices of Daniel A. Hunt. You have, your mic has been enabled. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I respectfully request that the Board of Trustees petition the California Supreme Court for the immediate extension of the provisional license program and to include a provision which extends the pathway to full licensure for all current provisionally licensed lawyers. As you are well aware, these licenses will expire on June 1st. And as a provisionally licensed lawyer, I just want to express the gratitude and acknowledge all that the Board of Trustees have done to put this in place and allow us to thrive such an unprecedented time of the pandemic. As a result of provisional license program, many of the members of this remaining PLO group over the last 18 months were able to gain an upward of 3,000 supervised legal experience and training. And we've been able to make hundreds of appearances, which vastly exceeds the requirements that were made for the pathway to licensure for other PLLs. In addition, each remaining PLO completed the new attorney training adhered to the rules of professional conduct, competently represented our clients' interests, provided assistance in underserved, excuse me, in underserved areas of law, which allowed help and access to people to the legal system who otherwise were struggling to obtain that. Through the use of our licenses, we assisted with supporting our courts and alleviating the backlog of cases created by the pandemic that caused the shutdown of the courts. We're not seeking for a diploma privilege. We are not asking for a free pass. What we're asking for is that we're just requesting a pathway to licensure after a year and a half of supervised legal work as lawyers. And we're, through such work experience, we have demonstrated our competent ability in practicing law. Therefore, we ask for your support in petitioning Supreme Court for an immediate extension of the active PLO licenses and to extend it to a pathway to licensure to cover all provisional licensed lawyers. I thank you for your time and I waive the rest of my time on this.
Thank you, Mr. Grow.
Next, we have Eric Abramian. Eric, your mic has been enabled. You have three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Erica Abramian and I'm a provisionally licensed California lawyer. I acquired my license in the fall of 2021 and began practicing in the field of corporate transactional law. I want to express my great admiration for the California bar because during a difficult time, it has allowed me to practice to begin practicing in the area of law I know best. And it's allowed me to help clients achieve successful results and contributed to my supervisor's practice. On behalf of the 300 provisionally licensed California lawyers, I want to thank you for providing the small group the ability to start our careers. We all knew our licenses would expire, but we didn't know how we would be impacted when they did. When we enrolled in this program, we had no idea what the next year and a half would hold. We just wanted to begin working and survive the mess that 2020 left us. But now we're fully immersed ourselves into our, into our careers and the only option we have is to stop practicing law, which is the only thing we know how to do. After a year into the workforce as lawyers, we are dependent on by our clients and our supervisors. The majority of us are not able to stop working to fully focus on the bar exam. We can search for entry-level, non-lethal jobs and be forced to select different careers. Or we can go back in time and clerk for our firms, neither of which seem to be viable options. I speak for all 300 of us when I say that we are in, we are not looking for a free pass. We've been working and proving our excellence for the last year while studying for and taking the bar exam. And after much convincing, we were able to find good people who would take a chance on us without a permanent license. But now we're in a rut. While we're so grateful for the California bar welcoming us into this program, we would not be in this predicament today if it were not for the opportunities this program provided. We urge you to help us out of this mess that we ironically are grateful you got us into. We ask that you extend the provisional licensure program and follow Washington DC's example by requiring us to practice under the supervision of a California attorney for three years as a path to full licensure. The small number of people registered in the provisional license program indicates that the majority of California bar applicants did not find this program would benefit them. And those who did enroll were sure they wanted to begin practicing law in California. Just as we saw a great opportunity in this program and relied on the California bar to help us begin.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
We now ask that you reciprocate by having faith in this small group of people who have demonstrated they are loyal to your organization and are fighting for their careers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Abramian.
Next, we have Nicole Chiatum. I apologize if I mispronounced that. Your mic has been enabled. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Nicole Chiatum and I am currently a provisionally licensed attorney through the state bars program. And the reason for my comment today is to request that you petition the, the court to extend the program. I started working for the firm that I work with in 2020, I'm sorry, in 2019 as a certified law student and a law clerk. And once I graduated, I was hired full-time as a provisionally licensed attorney. We currently service underprivileged communities and children who have special needs and that are differently abled. We are currently have several cases that are before federal court and we know how court works where there's lots of extensions and continuances and dates being moved. We also are well aware of the backlog in California courts caused by the COVID pandemic. We are a small firm and my license expiring in less than two weeks would not only be a detriment to me and my firm, but also to the clients that we serve. There would be no way for my supervising attorney to take over all of these cases that have been pushed back beyond June 1st on his own. It also leaves me in a predicament where with my license, I am unable to find gainful employment that I need. During law school, I endured a pandemic. I also endured a divorce and I endured a serious injury that required me to be hospitalized and have surgery three times, during which time one of them became septic. And I still was able to graduate on time and make the dean's list. And I don't say that as an example of my exceptionalism, but I say that as an example of my persistent endeavor and my dedication to this profession and to help people who look like me and are in the same position at me. I am now a single parent. A lot of my clients are single parents and they come from lower socioeconomic backgrounds. And a lot of our cases are taken as pro bono and on contingency. And I think it would be a great disservice to these families and their children and the people that we serve if we're no longer be able to provide them access to justice because my license has expired. Thank you, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chiatum. Okay, I see we have no more hands raised. Let me do one last check of the trustees to see whether any of you have any folks in your physical presence. I see Mr. Pittman has raised his hand, but let me look around to the trustees. Anybody present with you would like to address the board from your locations? Okay, I see a bunch of shaking heads. Great, thank you. Madam Secretary, more hands.
We have John Pittman. Your mic has been enabled and you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. I would like to thank the board and the Supreme Court for creating the provisionally licensed program that has allowed us to serve hundreds of families in the state of California. As a provisionally licensed lawyer, we've gained over 2,000 hours of actual training as a lawyer. As it stands right now, there are clients that we've been helping who our help to them is basically going to just come to a sudden end. And as a colleague just mentioned, our supervising attorneys are not in position to instantly absorb and do all of the work that's necessary for those clients that's, that's still needs things done with their case coming beyond June 1st. Many of our clients have developed relationships with their provisionally licensed lawyer and essentially will feel abandoned and may not want to continue or develop a relationship with the supervising attorney. And that could, uh, that, that, that could cause a just distrust with the community and the legal, the legal community right now. With that said, we respectfully request that the board petition the Supreme Court to extend the time for the provisionally licensed lawyers and create a pathway for full licensure. We're not looking for a free pass. However, we are seeking to have consideration for the work and training that we have done and the service that we've provided to the community. With that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Next, we have Robin Loza. Robin, your mic has been enabled and you have three minutes. I see that your mic is still muted. If you unmute your mic, um, we'll leave, okay, there we go.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak today. I'm a, my name is Robin Loza and I've been participating in the provisional license program since it started. I'm respectively asking that the California State Bar extend the program and grant, and grant a pathway to full license. When I graduated during the peak of the pandemic, I had to use my bar money to get safe housing get safe housing and pay for medical insurance and utilities. Despite my struggles, I still continued to study and I even took the bar exam because I told myself that nothing was going to get in the way. In addition, I had to start working full-time in order to cover my cost of living. This program allowed me to gain full-time employment in the areas of public service, including immigration, public defense, and currently where I'm at in litigation defense at a competitive salary. It has taken me two years to catch up on my car loan, credit cards, and rent. Regardless of how difficult life challenges got, I continued to study and I took the bar exam two more times. As of today, during these times of study, I have received multiple eviction notice, multiple eviction notices and had to sell most of my stuff to survive. However, I'm still not going to give up. If the program is taken away from us, my income may be reduced or will be reduced to 20,000 and may even lose my employment. I will repeat this perpetual overwhelming feeling of survival and trying to I will repeat this perpetual overwhelming feeling of survival and trying to study for the bar. I cannot lose my position. I need my income to survive. I do not come from a financially stable family that can support me. I am alone for the more COVID has devastated my finances and caused me tremendous fear and anxiety about losing my apartment. This program has allowed me to work for my current employer and earn a competitive income that will keep a roof over my head and not fall into death. Thank you so much for your time. I waive the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Loza.
Next, we have Nathan Dondy. Nathan, your mic has been enabled and you have three minutes.
Thank you. And thank you for, for allowing me to comment on today. And I do join with the rest of the provisional licensed lawyers in making a motion for the extension of the provisional licensing program. My comments are going to be very short. One is that simply put that the, this program is being terminated because either we've not passed a bar exam or I think that is the main reason. I think the main reason the bar exam exists is to determine whether or not a person is competent enough to practice law. It tests for minimum competency. I believe most of us have been provisionally licensed lawyers for more than a year and a half or just about that time. And in that time, I believe, I don't think there's any evidence or any showing that either of us have been able to show the competence to practice law. I also think the other part of licensure is to prevent prejudice to the California populace in terms of legal representation. I think taking a license away from competent lawyers who zealously represented clients for the past year and a half formed relationship with those people would, I think, create some kind of prejudice. I believe that's also noticeable and that's the reason why our constitution provides a right to counsel wants to choose it. We've formed relations with people with zealously represented them. We've formed relationships with opposing counsel in this cases and taken that away simply just because a person has not passed a bar exam, which is supposed to show a person's competency to practice law, but has demonstrated competency, I think would be not only prejudicial, but in a sense arbitrary. And I waive the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Dondy.
Next, we have Bohan Chen. Bohan, your mic has been enabled and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. So I'm very glad I can just participate in this meeting and pronounce my public comment for the provisional license program. So I do provisional license attorney in the state bar of California. I'm really, I really appreciate the state bar of California can offer this great opportunity for all our 2020 law school graduates. And I have been practicing public interest law in the legal aid and my efforts have been dedicated to the area of many areas such as the employment, family law and housing eviction defendants. It is very important for us to use a provisional license to service this wonderful community, to service this low income populations. They need our help. They need my help. So my clients really need my legal practice to help them to achieve, to support their life, to achieve their goals. So that is very, very important for me, not only for us, but also for all the low income group in the California state of California. So I understand that this temporary license does not create an implied right to practice law permanently, but I respectfully request that the state bar of California could extend this wonderful provisional license program and provide a pathway to full license for those who have complied with the program's rules and who have diligently practiced law in the state of California. So that is my comment for today and thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Next, we have Bohan Chichak. Your mic has been enabled and you have three minutes.
Dear Board of Trustees, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am one of the PLLs and one of the people in this group that has English as a secondary language. It was very hard, you know, studying for the law school all the time, taking the bar exam. But provisional license helped a lot. It helped me to understand how the things work, to practice everything and, you know, touch into the lives of the people and, you know, understand everything. So it made me competent. For me, I have a language is my secondary language. English is my secondary language. I took the bar in July 21. I missed it three points. So it's like 0.2%. And then I took the family bar and I missed it four points, which is like 0.2%. Now I'm losing my license and I just, you know, it's not going to help me. It's not going to help people of California. It's not going to help my law office. If I lose my license and stop representing my clients and defend people in their eviction cases or other harassment cases or anything, I will lose my license and, you know, then it will, of course, affect all the people emotionally. And if you grant us this provision license and give us a pathway to full licensure, I believe that will be the benefit for all stakeholders in California, including all the people living in this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chichak. Hey, Madam Secretary, it looks like we have reached the end of public comment. That'll take us to item 10 on our regular meeting agenda, which is approval of open session minutes from March 24th and 25th, 2022 and March 28th, 2022. Does any member of the board have any corrections or modifications to the open session minutes? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve as presented.
This is Brandon. I'll move.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros? Cisneros, I see you are on mute. Oh. Okay, I see you saying I, but I don't. I think there might be a technical. Okay, there we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Dela Cruz?
Yeah.
Dylan?
Yes.
Sillig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Hi.
So?
Hi.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Hi.
The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, trustees. Moving on in the agenda, this is the portion for my oral report. I've got a short list of items I wanted to talk to you about, but I think in light of the public comment we've just heard and communications that I have received by email over the last week or so, maybe some of you have likewise received them. I wanted to address the provisional licensure program just very briefly. I really can't think about this program without thinking about Hai Lin Chen and the very hardworking group of dedicated lawyers and non-lawyers who sort of put their heads together to come up with the contours of this program at a very stressful time for a lot of aspiring lawyers in California during the pandemic. I was fortunate enough to be a part of that group and there were many, many hours of public input, you know, very in some sense, heart wrenching, heart wrenching stories of challenges people were facing at a very critical time in their lives. And so that group put together a recommendation that the Supreme Court ultimately adopted, creating the program that we've been hearing about this afternoon. It's clear that the program has been effective for a large number of provisionally licensed lawyers in California, their clients and the attorneys who supervise them. And as we've all heard, the deadline is fast approaching for the expiration of that program. This is not an agenda item, so we really can't engage in a discussion about it. But I did want to, if I could, use my prerogative as chair to request that Ms. Wilson, our executive director, reach out to her current part of the Supreme Court. We had requests for filing a petition. I'm not sure that's necessarily required, but certainly I think the state bar could work through administrative channels to request that the court consider extending the program based on, I'm sure, things that they have heard as well and what the testimony we've heard here today and the very prolific written encouragement that we've all received. So again, I don't think we can discuss this. I'll look at Mr. Retana to confirm that for me. But Ms. Wilson, if you could please convey to the court my concerns, I can only speak for myself as the chairman of the board. But you've heard, you've heard plenty of testimony today, so I'm hoping that the trustees would support me in that request.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's not agendized, so we really can't take action on it. But I think it's appropriate for you to give your thoughts on this to Ms. Wilson and direction.
Great. Thank you so much. And again, thank you to all the folks who have contacted us and shared their stories with us and to the court for creating the program indeed. Okay, the next item on my oral report is something a little bit bittersweet for me. We are saying a sort of farewell to a very very valued member of the state bars team. Ms. Lori Maloc is retiring, but you'll, the board might have seen that there's an agenda item because we just don't know how to let go of people entirely all at once. So we're hoping that Ms. Maloc will continue to assist us on a, as needed and temporary basis. But before, before she goes, I would like to present her with a resolution on behalf of the board of trustees, thanking her for her many years of service. Madam Secretary, if I'm not mistaken, you may be able to pop that up on the screen. There we go. And we don't make a habit of reading every resolution that is long that comes before us, but certainly 28 years of dedicated service warrants a few minutes of having to listen to me speak. So I hope that you will indulge me, Ms. Maloc. I hope that you are on the line and listening and know that this is truly heartfelt from all of us. After 28 years of dedicated, dedicated to furthering justice and client protection, Lori Maloc will retire from the state bar of California on May 31st, 2022. She has dedicated her state bar of California career to issues that protect the public, primarily with the Client Security Trust Fund, this Client Security Fund, excuse me. As the Director of the State Bar of California's Client Security Fund, Lori Maloc supervised reimbursements to victims of attorney misconduct totaling over $81.3 million since 2012 and personally resolved over 8,700 cases in the amount of $56.5 million over the course of her Client Security Fund career since 1996. I want to let that sink in for a bit. This is public protection in earnest and I'm very, very grateful for this work. Through national affiliations, Lori Maloc has impacted the lives of untold individuals by providing knowledge and informational support for client security funds in the United States and Canada. Lori Maloc has been the heart, soul and conscience of the Client Security Fund and through her gracious leadership has been instrumental in reimbursing victims of attorney misconduct. Lori Maloc has more recently been the Program Director for the Office of Professional Support and Client Protection, learning about the Office of Case Management and Supervision and the Lawyer Assistance Program and working to implement the attorney's supervision and assistance redesign to protect the public and provide support to attorneys. Lori Maloc's influence on the State Bar of California will have a positive impact lasting into the future. Now therefore be it resolved that the State Bar Board of Trustees and the leadership of the State Bar of California expresses our deepest appreciation to Lori Maloc for her invaluable contributions to the State Bar of California. Lori, congratulations and thank you truly on behalf of a grateful profession and and a grateful organization. I know that you're on the line. I would certainly welcome hearing from you if you care to address the board. Certainly don't feel pressured to do so, but the floor is yours if you'd like it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate those kind words. I just want to say that it's been an honor to make my career here. Personally, it was a job that gave a work-life balance so that I could raise my two sons that I'm so proud of. I made friends over the years and the people I've worked with are just a fine dedicated group of people that work here at the state bar. And professionally, I've been very lucky to do meaningful work that has really made a difference. Working toward the ideal of upholding the integrity of the legal profession, but in a practical way by actually, especially with the Client Security Fund, being able to give back people who have been victimized by attorneys, actually giving them their money back. And I can't say enough about how important I think the work that the Client Security Fund does for the state bar is. It really makes a difference for people. So it's been my privilege to be a part of it and I thank you again for your kind words.
Thank you, Lori. Does any member of the board of trustees want to add anything at this point for the staff?
Mr. Chair, this is Brandon, if I could.
Please.
So I've had the pleasure of working with Lori on many different projects and most recently the probation redesign project. And she has taken on an enormous amount of work and an enormous amount of change in that area and has really distilled it down to something that both Mark Broughton and I can, can understand. And so this is the latest project that she's worked on and if any indication of the body of her work, we're very fortunate to have Lori and her talents and wish, wish her the best in retirement.
Thank you, Brandon. I see Ms. Wilson has raised her hand.
Yes, well, I have the privilege, I think it was just last week of going down to LA to attend a surprise retirement party that Lori's staff put on for her. And it was so wonderful to be able to be with her staff, but also her family that came. And what it was a testament to is what an amazing person she is and how much she is valued and respected by her team. And I want to say that we've been working as an organization, and you'll hear this a little bit from me when I make my remarks on organizational values. And one of the tentative values that we've come up with is a growth mindset. And Lori, you know, after being in the Client Security Fund and living and breathing the Client Security Fund for decades, demonstrated that growth mindset that we stumbled on as an organizational value when she willingly said, yes, I'll take on probation and yes, I'll take on the lawyer's assistance program. And she's done it with such aplomb. And you can see it again and how her team has responded to her. Brandon mentioned the probation redesign project. She has advanced reform in probation. And so I just think she's an amazing person, a wonderful woman personally and a wonderful person professionally as well. So congratulations to you, Lori. I know you will not be camping and I wish you lots of fun doing your non-camping activities.
Thank you, Leah. Sean?
Well, Lori, so I've been on the board for, I think, more than six years now. And so I've only worked with you in the context of hearing your reports at our board meetings. And I just want to say they always have inspired confidence that that program is in good hands. And it's such an important program because it's helping to make whole the victims of that very small minority of lawyers who steal money from their clients to the shame of all of us. But all the rest of us lawyers contribute to that fund to help, to help right those wrongs. And you've been the one orchestrating all of that work and making sure those payments are made. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Sean. Lori, again, thank you for the tremendous work. And we wish you a happy retirement.
Thank you again to all of you.
Not camping, apparently.
No.
You and, you and my wife must be related. Okay, I'm going to move on to another item.
Sorry, Chair Duran, because it's a resolution, I believe we need to take a vote on it.
Ah, thank you. I apologize. Can I have a motion to approve that resolution as, as presented?
This is Brandon, so moved.
This is Shelby second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have the role.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Sillig?
Yes.
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Yes, absolutely.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, the motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, trustees. And again, Lori, thank you. Okay, next up on my Chair's report is another resolution. Two weeks ago, the State Bar implemented its new remote work policy, officially becoming a hybrid workplace where most staff work in the office two days a week and work remotely the rest of the week. We're excited to see what this new workplace model brings to the State Bar in terms of efficiency, cost savings, and recruitment and retention of talented staff. A little over two years ago, of course, the State Bar, like other organizations, pivoted almost overnight to new ways of working. Through a long period of uncertainty and scary times, the State Bar staff kept operations going and never faltered in their commitment to the State Bar's public protection mission. And during this time, while most staff members worked remotely, a great many were in fact in the office regularly. So on behalf of the State Bar Board of Trustees, I'd like to propose a resolution of thanks to the entire State Bar staff for its dedication and commitment during this very challenging time. Trustees, there you see the resolution. I'm happy to entertain any questions or commentary from the board. Leah, I'm sorry, Brandon, go ahead.
I was just going to move the motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I apologize, who seconded?
Dela Cruz.
Yeah, thank you.
Any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll?
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. You know, I think it is important that the board do what it just did in recognizing the challenges that our employees have faced over the past couple of years and still, you know, are doing the job and doing it well in service and protection of the public. So I look forward to seeing that resolution in its final form. I hope I get to sign it, actually. Yeah. Okay, the last item on my report is just an update to the Board of Trustees. If I believe that you have seen that our annual fee bill is making its way through the legislature. Happy to report that it passed out of the Assembly on unanimous vote and will make its way to the Senate shortly, and we look forward to a similar result at the Senate. I do want to thank Chairman Stone and the members of the Assembly Judiciary Committee and their staff for working with us as we marked up, not marked up that bill, but certainly worked together on that bill and just just look forward to getting that done this year again. So thank you very much, everyone involved. Okay. Any questions on any of that? Seeing none? That brings us to the Executive Director's report, I believe.
All right, and I will be brief, but just picking up on where Ruben left off, we have brought brought in the new hybrid in-office remote work policy to State Bar beginning at the 2nd of May. And what I what I want to say about it quite candidly is it has not been easy. It's not, it would not be accurate for me to say that everyone is thrilled about it, but what I would say is that I am proud of our organization. I think certainly for a public sector entity, we are leaning in to the reality that you do not need to manage through butts in seats. And instead that we come together in the office to collaborate, to integrate, and to build relationship. And so I'm excited to see how this unfolds for us. And it it ties to sort of this this new reality that we're embarking on here at the bar, ties to something else new that's underway that I alluded to earlier, which is the identification of organizational values or the development of our values. So you all today are going to be asked to finalize the strategic plan, directing where the agency is going to go over the course of the next five years. We, as a staff team, need to then develop a corresponding operational plan, the tactical steps we will take to effectuate that strategic vision. But values tell us how we do our work. How do we treat one another? And how do we treat the public that we serve? And we have not had values as an organization. There's been a small task force put together of all different levels of staff that have developed an initial set of values, and we'll be rolling those out formally to the entire staff at our all-staff meeting next week. But just to give you a preview of some of them, one of them is clarity. We have clarity around what we're doing and why we are doing it. Investing in our people. We value our employees as our number one asset. Excellence. We work to our full potential to achieve the mission of the bar. Respect. We treat each other with dignity and respect. And a growth mindset, and I mentioned this in relation to Lori. We hear, share, and ask why. We are willing to advance new ideas, willing to take chances and risks. And I think as I reflect on this past couple of weeks with our remote hybrid in-office schedule and all the feedback I've gotten from staff, it would say that that all of those values come into play. And being willing to receive the feedback, hear it, reflect on it, be willing to change our approach after we've tested some things out for some time, that's all embedded and reflected in these values that we are developing as an organization. So I I will just pause there to let you know, we often talk about, and you've got two days of an agenda focused on a lot of our external work. We are doing work internally as well on ourselves, and I just wanted to share that with all of you.
Thank you, Leah. I appreciate the thoughtful way that you're approaching this. And adaptability, right? That is one of the themes that I spoke about when I first took over as a chair, and it's great to see it in action. And I think it does make us a strong organization ultimately. Any questions of Leah from the from the board? Okay, seeing none.
Ruben, Luis reminded me here, Governance in the Public Interest Task Force.
Yeah, exactly. I'm 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 going to correct that error. I apologize, members. I skipped over one of the items that was actually on the agenda in my Chair's report. And that is, as reflected in the very brief staff report, the bar is required to create, was required to create a government, a governance in the Public Interest Task Force. Business and Professions Code Section 6,101.2 sets forth this requirement. And the legislature says that the task force must be made up of three attorney members of the Board of Trustees, one of whom shall be a Supreme Court appointee selected by the other Supreme Court appointees, one of whom shall be a member appointed by the Senate Committee on Rules, and one of whom shall be the member appointed by the Speaker of the Assembly. The committee also will have three public members of the Board of Trustees, one of whom is a member appointed by the Senate Committee on Rules, the other appointed by the Speaker of the Assembly, and the final one selected from the gubernatorial appointees on the board already. And then the board chair who will preside over the Governance in the Public Interest Task Force. I have started the process of seeking interest in nominations for each of those positions that aren't already statutorily set forth. So that means essentially the selection of the trustee who is an attorney appointed by the Supreme Court and the public member appointed by the governor. I have I have a couple of trustees who expressed interest. I let I let folks know that I would also accept nominations from the floor. Once I have those nominations, I will work with the people who've been nominated and and make those appointments to be announced at our July meeting. So thank you to those of you who expressed interest. At this time, I'll open up the floor to see if there is anybody who would like to nominate yourself or someone from the floor. If not, then we will undertake the selection process offline and then report back in July. Mr. Stallings?
Thank you. So I would like to nominate Mark Broughton as the Supreme Court Attorney, a member of the Governance Task Force. The only stipulation is, and he only agreed to this nomination if the discussion was as robust as the Appendix I discussion. So I hope that every member of the task force holds him to that. But thank you, Mark, for agreeing to use your considerable history with the bar and direct us in our next Governance Look-Through.
And so just.
The condition was that I never have to hear that word again, but.
Yeah, I'll second that notion, at least if it's not a motion. Just a reminder, folks, that the 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 task force reports to the legislature every three years on its work, and the charge is fairly fairly broad. It's set forth in the staff report, including recommendations for enhancing the protection of the public and ensuring that protection of the public is the highest priority in the licensing, regulation, and discipline of attorneys. And so once the task force is formed, that will be our charge, and I look forward to working with the members of the task force once we're once we're assembled. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, that takes us to the consent calendar. Today's consent calendar consists of multiple items, all of which hopefully you've had a chance to review in advance of this meeting. Does any member of the Board of Trustees want to pull any of those consent items for separate discussion and vote? Ms. Shelby?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item 50-3.
That is the report taken by Audit Committee on behalf of the Board of Trustees on April 27, etc. Okay, we will pull that one. Trustee Tony?
Thank you, Chair Duran. I would like to pull 50-1-1, the Examsoft contract. 50-61, the CLE issue. And 50-141, which is a quarterly financial report.
Let me just make sure I get all those down. Madam Secretary, did you get those? I think I only got two of the three.
I have 50-1. I believe that's.
Dash one.
Yes, and then 50, and then I I have 54-141. But I missed the second one. Trustee Tony?
50-61?
Six one. Okay, those have likewise been pulled. We'll consider them in order. Mr. Selig?
I'd like to pull item 50-1, item 12.
Okay, anybody else? Madam Secretary, just for a clear record, will you let us know which items we will not be voting on once the motion of the consent calendar is made?
Yes. But just to clarify, Trustee Tony, looking at the agenda, we have 50-6. We do not have a 50-61.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is 50-6. My notes.
Okay, thank you.
They were too close together. Sorry.
Got it. Okay. Okay, so we have 50-1, item 1, 50-1, item 12, 50-6, and 54-141.
50-141, I think.
This is the quarterly financial statement is 54-141.
54, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay. Thank you. And then I'm sorry, Ms. Shelby pulled the audit.
The audit item. 50-3.
50-3. Great. Thank you. Could I have a motion on the rest of the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
Motion by Selig?
I'll second. Jose?
Second by Cisneros. Do we have a roll, please?
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz?
Yeah.
Dylan?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
Okay.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, trustees. That brings us to item 50-1, sub 1, which is the approval of specified contracts. This is the contract for Examsoft. Trustee Tony, did you have a specific question? Would you like a report from the staff?
I continue to object to controversial items being placed on consent. Examsoft is controversial item. Been in the news. I have voted against every Examsoft contract since I started because of their substandard performance, and I want to be on the record today as voting against this contract. There's, I don't feel any need for any further reports. If anybody else has questions, time. Otherwise, I'm ready to move to a motion to approve, and I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Tony. Any other questions or comments on the Examsoft item? Anything from the staff? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
Jose, I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
Madam Secretary, did you get those?
Moved by Cisneros, seconded by Dela Cruz. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Broughton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz?
Yeah.
Dylan?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Stain?
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Nay.
Eight ayes, one nay, the motion carries.
There was one abstention, I believe, Madam Secretary.
One abstention. Thank you.
Thank you. It takes us to 50-1, number 12, notification services related to non-public information disclosure with Epic Corporate Services, Inc. I believe, Mr. Selig, this was you? Or did I get it wrong?
I I don't think that's the one he you intended to pull from consent. Is it, Sean?
I'm sorry, I took the note that it was item 12 under 50-1. Madam Secretary, did I miss? Did I make that mistake?
I also understood as item 12, but perhaps Trustee Selig meant item 11?
Sorry, I was I was on mute. No, I didn't mean item 11. I meant item 12, Special Deputy Counsel Administrator Services.
Oh, that's item 11.
Yeah.
I just pulled this. I'm looking at the document that's posted on the agenda site. Did it change?
On mine, which I'm also I'm on I'm online showing as that's showing as number 11.
Oh, I had it showing as item 12, and I just pulled the pulled the agenda.
So.
I think you just need to refresh.
Need to refresh, okay. Oh, what should we do?
I apologize. The memo is 12 on the agenda. It shows us 11.
Epic and the Epic and Stacia are flipped in the table in the agenda item, whereas on the website, it's item 11 is Stacia LaGuardia.
Oh, I I'm looking, I see. I'm looking at the memo, and you're saying agenda is, oh, all right. Well. Well.
Online though, before, before Mr. Selig goes, but online, I'm looking at the agenda online right now and it's saying item twelve.
Yep, right.
So it may be the number of the agenda that is posted because I know numerous agendas were posted, but online right now it lists as twelve.
I see. All right, so I'll just suggest we treat the agenda as controlling and so that means, I, I don't, I'm not opposing item eleven, the Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator. I just thought it was worth a brief discussion, so. What I would propose to do is first, let me move approval of item fifty dash one, item eleven, because I inadvertently took it off consent. And then, once we have that vote, I'll just, I think Lee already knows what I have in mind and she could just provide a brief discussion of item twelve, and if someone opposes it, then anyone who voted in favor of the consent calendar can make a motion for reconsideration. So I move to approve item fifty dash one, item eleven.
Dylan second.
Any discussion on that motion?
Can we get the title of that motion again?
Sean, would you like to remind the board?
It's approval of item fifty dash one on the consent agenda and within that item, item, the designated. Oh, sorry, it should be, did I misspeak? It should be item twelve we need to approve.
Which is the.
Can we get the word, the word?
Let me, let me, let me withdraw the motion and start over. So I moved to approve item fifty dash one, the item designated on the agenda, number twelve, notification services related to non-public information disclosure with Epic Corporate Services. And I make the motion because I inadvertently and mistakenly pulled this off the consent agenda.
Any discussion or a second on that? Is, any, just any second before a discussion, Mr. Trustee Shelby?
I, I will second. I also have a discussion, though.
Of course.
I, I'm just trying to figure out through the staff, because the, the agenda that's currently posted right now, which I believe is like agenda number forty, has, has item fifty one dash twelve as the, I just want to be clear what agenda that we have the public looking at, because it sounds like there were some inversion that's transpiring. And I think for our records, we need to be looking, we all need to be looking at the same agenda for the conversation. So that's, that's my only discussion item. Would it, would it be helpful if I shared my screen? I think that would be perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. This is the posted agenda. And we're at fifty dash one, item eleven for Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator Services with Stacia Laguna. And item twelve, notification services related to non-public information disclosure with Epic Corporate Services, Inc.
But, but to be clear, the present motion is limited to item twelve, notification services with Epic Corporate Services. That's the only topic of the current motion.
And that, that's, that's clear to me, trustee Selig. I will note that, that the agenda that the secretary has, is sharing her screen with is the same agenda that I'm looking at. That's online now.
And so. Just to clarify, the, the agenda item memo transposed eleven and twelve, so in the posted agenda item memo, number eleven is the notification services and number twelve is the Special Deputy Trial Counsel. They just got transposed in the agenda item memo.
Okay. I think Sean's correct that we probably should revote item twelve because it was pulled. And then we can entertain a discussion or questions on item eleven. So let's do number twelve, please. Was there a motion, Madam Secretary?
Yes, by Selig and seconded by Shelby.
Can we take a roll, please? Any discussion? Seeing none. Can we have a roll?
Ratin?
Yes.
Chen?
I believe trustee Chen had to step away for a quick minute.
Okay, thank you. Sisneros?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yeah.
Dylan?
Yeah.
Leg?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays and one absent. The motion carries.
Great, thank you. Okay, now let's talk about what is item eleven on the agenda. The contract for the Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator. Mr. Selig, would you like to address?
Yes, thank you. So, uh, this is the item I intended to pull. I'm not going to pull it because I, I support it. I just thought it's sufficiently important and the dollar amount is high enough that it was worth discussing briefly. And so I'm hoping Leah can just give us a real quick summary of this item. And if the board members are all in favor of it, we don't need to take any further action. Leah, before you do that, I just have one question, which is the figure listed in the menu memo of three hundred sixty seven thousand dollars. I assume that must be the entire nineteen month contract period. Is that, am I right about that?
Yes.
Yes, and I, I'm going to actually let Steve Mazur do it because given that I am a licensed California attorney, everyone in OGC is as well. We determined that it would be most appropriate for a non-attorney to negotiate this contract with Stacia and sort of be her main contractual point person. So Steve, why don't you go ahead and do, provide a brief summary?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And Jose, please feel free to jump in. Jose was an integral part of, of this process as well. So as you know, the Special Deputy Trial Counsel program has existed for many years and traditionally it is based on contracted folks. There is usually one contracted administrator who usually works about a quarter time basis administering the program. And then there is a large staff of contracted Special Deputy Trial Councils who work on individual cases for, you know, sometimes as little as ten hours a year or so and sometimes significantly more, depending on the number and the nature of the cases they work on. And the twenty twenty-two budget as in prior years does include funds for the entirety of that program. The slight difference here this year is that in recruiting for the Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator role, we did find significant challenges in filling that role. So we did, we had to do the recruitment a couple of times. In doing that recruitment process, we found someone who was willing to come on board for a near full-time basis to do kind of a hybrid role of spending the traditional approximate twenty-five percent of time as the Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator, but also herself carrying a full deputy, Special Deputy Trial Counsel caseload. So because this opportunity came up for this very skilled resource that we're all very excited about, and we thought this was a good opportunity to bring this resource on board, so she will be essentially doing this hybrid role of both Special Deputy Trial Counsel Administrator and carrying her own caseload. The assumption is, from a budget perspective, we're not anticipating in twenty twenty-two any significant impact to the existing budget for the program, simply because by carrying a full caseload, there will be fewer hours assigned out to other deputy, Special Deputy Trial Councils. Additionally, the rate that she will be paid is scaled lower than the traditional hourly rate for the contractors that are approved by the board. Usually, the Special Deputy Trial Counsel gets two hundred and seventy-five dollars per hour and the Special Deputy Trial Councils, when the administrator gets that much, the Special Deputy Trial Councils get two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. That's a rate that the board just updated last November, I believe. But because those rates were contemplated, just a very limited number of hours, a very small sort of part-time role, because this contractor is available for approaching a full-time basis, the salary is scaled what would more likely be a regular attorney's salary if it were a staff position. So that's sort of the, the description of where we are. Now, Jose, if you want to add anything about the, the nature of the program or if I've captured it sufficiently?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. No, I, I think you have captured it very well. I'll just add that Highland Chen and I, as Highland reported out in our regulations and discipline meeting earlier today, worked with Steve and state bar staff to, to execute a number of interviews and Stacia presented as by far and away the most promising candidate with, with excellent experience and glowing references. And we're thrilled that she's accepting this offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazur. Thank you, trustee Sisneros. Any other questions or comments on this item?
I'll just say, I think this is a really great move in further professionalizing the twenty-two oh one program. And so Steve and Highland and Jose, I'm really grateful to you for arranging this. It's also very cost effective because the hourly rate is lower than we would otherwise pay. So it's just a win-win for everyone.
We hope so, yes.
Great, I agree. Thank you. So we've already voted on this item because it was included in the original motion of the consent calendar. Does anyone see any confusion there or a need to take another vote? Just want to double check. Great, thank you. That takes us to item fifty dash six, I'm sorry, fifty dash three, which is the report of action taken by the Audit Committee. Trustee Shelby, you pulled this item. Would you like to make a report, give a, or request a report or ask a question?
No, I would actually, I actually thought that it was prudent since this is something that transpires annually. And I know it appeared on the board blast, but something as significant as the financial audit of the organization, I thought warranted a report. So I had asked for this in advance, will apologize for pulling it from the consent agenda, but thought it was important for the board to hear what transpired with the audit, particularly since the Audit Committee, and thank you to all the members of the Audit Committee, when we took this up, we were looking at a draft. So we weren't actually looking at the final report. One of the things that we learned in this process is that the state bar has four months to prepare for an annual financial audit and other comparable public agencies have six. And so that was something that transpired that we thought, you know, would be great to, to speak to the legislative committee to have them address that. And so if our very proficient CFO could just share some highlights, because it's one of the things that we get right. And I think we've got to do a good job of communicating when we do things well and certainly commend her and her team for working aggressively and with our outside counsel to get this submitted in a timely fashion. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, trustee Shelby. Ms. Montoya Chico, that, that, that brings you up.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Melanie. Yes, as, as Melanie mentioned, our audited financial statement was filed on, was due to be filed on April thirtieth. We filed it on the twenty ninth, which was that Friday. Yes, all our, my team, really, they're, they're the ones who did all, all the work. So it's, it's thanks to them that we were able to get this done on time. And it always is a tight, a tight timeline, given that we have a lot of competing priorities during the first quarter with the budget process going on and billing, billing season also going on. So I'll just highlight really quick what the audited financials entailed. And that's three reports. The first one, the core one is the actual financial statements that show our, our position, our assets and liabilities, the balance sheet, and then our revenues and expenses, which is the income statement. There's two other reports that I will, that I will say are more compliance type reports that get audited by our auditors NGO. One is the Legal Services Trust Fund Report. This one is in accordance with the Business and Professions Code. And what this report is auditing, essentially auditing us, is to ensure that the distribution of the IOTA funds are submitted or remitted to qualified legal service projects and legal support centers. And then the third report that's included, that's audited by NGO, is the Statement of Expenditure of Mandatory Fees. That audit is in compliance with the Keller Standard. And it basically just checks that we do not use mandatory fees paid by the licensees for political or ideological activities that are not related to the regulation, excuse me, of the legal profession. I think in terms of our overall results, I'll focus on the, on the income statement, which I think it would, you know, most of us here care about is how did we do, you know, our budget versus actual, then our, our revenues, generally speaking. So I think overall expenses, we did have savings and expenses. We ended the year with a hundred, about a hundred and ninety million dollar in actual expenses. That is a decrease from last year, same period, and that's really mostly due to savings and personnel. We had a lot of staff vacancies during the year, which resulted in a lot of savings in our personnel costs. Are a lot of, the, the change is also grant related. Grant related, we get a lot of, we had higher revenues, which really is mostly attributed, attributed to higher grants that we got compared to what we've historically received. And similarly, the more, the more grant revenues we get, the more expenses, grant expenses that we have to disperse. One unique thing that happened this year was every year we have an annual actuary evaluation, which impacts both our balance sheet and income payment accounts. This year, the pension plan actually performed relatively well. It resulted in a lot of investment earnings. Typically, it's investment losses. This year was investment earnings. So our funded position did improve as a result of that. And we had, we had significant savings and expenses versus, I should say, we had gains instead of expenses, which did impact the, the financial, the income statement in particular, which also helped reduce revenues. There was only one finding that I will mention to, to the board. And that was on our internal controls over financial reporting. The good thing is that it was an improvement. Last year, we also had the same finding. It was a significant deficiency last year. And this year, they brought it down to a just a controlled deficiency, which is the lowest form of a control deficiency that we, that an auditor can give their oddities. And it's really just, you know, the issues that I think you guys have struggled with are Oracle implementation. We're continuing to improve on that, but, you know, there have been issues with implementation that we're still to this day working through. And obviously, we've had a lot of, a lot of turnover and key personnel that has also hindered our, our ability to really operate at a maximum level if we had a full team. But we're working towards that goal and we've recently hired a finance manager, Justin, who, who I think will, will help us complete our, our core team.
Thank you. Any questions of the CFO? Okay, appreciate the report. Thank you, trustee Shelby, for putting this on the spotlight. Can I get a motion to approve item fifty point three as presented?
So moved.
I second. Dylan second.
Thank you. Motion by Shelby, seconded by Dylan. Dylan, excuse me. Madam Secretary?
Ratin?
Yes.
Chen? Sisneros?
Hi.
Dela Cruz?
Yeah.
Dylan?
Yeah.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one absent. The motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to item fifty dash six, which is the annual recommendation regarding licensees not in compliance with MCLE, Minimum Continuing Legal Education Requirements. Mr. Tony, you've pulled this. Do you have a question or, or a comment or do you need a report?
Yes, I, I had asked staff to provide the board with further information about the number of attorneys impacted by this proposal. When I, when I read the memo, I have no idea whether it's twenty or two thousand. I just have no clue. And I, and I thought it would be good also for us to be aware of what the demographics might look like. Just to be aware, I, I, I get the point that we need to have enforcement for, that's why it's called mandatory, continuing legal education credits. But as a board, we, we should just know a little bit more about it. It wasn't in the memo.
Thank you, trustee Tony. I see that. The Director of Attorney Regulation and Consumer Resources, Ms. DiLoreto, has joined us. If you would respond to the question, I would appreciate it.
Happy to. I'm sorry that you were missing that information. The, the original group due to report this year was sixty-seven thousand active attorneys. As of today, we're down to twenty-three eighty-five. So we're doing quite well. And at the time that we sent the sixty-day notice, it represented about four percent of the population originally due to report. Yet, last year, we sent a sixty-day notice to five. Yet last year, we sent a sixty-day notice to 5%. So we're on the right track. I think that the many email reminders we send, and we're relying more and more on email communications, are helping getting people, you know, to do what they need to do on a timely basis, and they're well-informed.
And I'd also like to take this opportunity to introduce the full board to Yun Jiang. She is our new Chief of Mission, Dax's replacement. And I did ask her, Mark, to run some of the demographic data that you asked for. So Yun, do you want to briefly present your findings there?
Sure. Good afternoon. Happy to be here. My name is Yun Jiang. Per Trustee Tony's request, we did run the data analysis. We compared the two groups. One is the overall attorney population based on the most recent attorney census data, dataset. Then the other group is an MCLE non-compliant group. Estina just mentioned that it's slightly over 2,000 at this point. So those lawyers are the currently non-compliant with the MCLE requirements. We look at the race and the gender composition. We did not find noticeable differences between the two, two groups. I can share with you what categories we looked at. We look at white men, white women, men of color, women of color, white non-binary, non-binary of color, and unknown. So that's the result. Trustee Tony, I know this, you requested the data for the five-year trend analysis. We plan to do that after the deadline of June 30th. Estina, you can correct me if that's right. So when we have the final list, so we can run this year's comparison again, back to five years, and we can look at the trend of the demographic changes.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Jiang, and welcome to the bar. We're happy to have you.
Thanks. Excited to be here.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Commentary from the board? May I have a motion, please?
I would move approval of fifty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Tony.
Mr. Jose, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cisneros. Madam Secretary?
Bratton?
Yes.
Chen?
I'll abstain because I missed the discussion.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, one abstain. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That takes us to item fifty-four-one forty-one, Discussion of the 2021 Quarter Four Financial Statements and 2022 Quarter One Financial Statement and Investment Report. Trustee Tony, you asked for this item to be pulled. Do you have a question or?
Well, I, what I want to say is that I believe it's a fundamental financial fiduciary responsibility of any board to review quarterly financial reports in addition to the annual audit. This is an issue I've complained about before. It's been on consent before. I've asked for it to be taken off. I'm going to keep asking for it to be taken off. It doesn't belong on consent. So I, I really want to be clear about that. I think we have a legal obligation to review quarterly financial reports. And I, I, you know, I have, I did inform our CFO ahead of time, of course, that I was interested in a brief report. So she, I believe she might be prepared to do so.
Looks, there you are. Welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. I, for this one, I will present just a few slides, a couple of slides, just because I think it's easier for you guys to see the numbers that I'm referring to. So if you're with me really quick, I'll share my screen. And I'll really quickly do a presentation of our Q1 results. Please let me know as soon as you see.
It's there.
Okay, perfect. So I'll really quickly highlight our Q1 results. I'll first start off with revenues and then followed by expenses. Overall, we do have our operating revenues above budget. Here's the different funds that make up those, that, that total, the total of the components of operating revenue. So importantly, on the general fund, we are above budget by about 1.2 million. And that's really just mostly due to more mandatory fees, more licensee payments that we received in the first quarter than we had anticipated. On the second item, those are the grant-related funds. Those, we are also above budget by about $2.7 million in revenues. A piece of that, there's, a portion of that is related to the Grants Fund, which covers HP3, the HP3 Fund Program. There was a discrepancy in how we allocated some of that revenue in our budget. So we do need to correct it to kind of minimize the actual, the actual, the true variance. So we will correct that going forward so that we don't have these discrepancies in the, in the coming quarters of 2022. Admissions Fund, which is another important fund, they're slightly above, the revenues, your actual revenues came slightly above budget by 1.2 million. And that's simply just because, you know, we got more February exam fees than we had, than we had anticipated. Moving really quickly on to the expenses, again, our expenses, our actuals came up a lot higher than the budget. And I'll get into the reasons why in a little bit, but I'll start first with the general fund. The general fund is, we do have savings of about $2 million in expenses, and that's really entirely due to the fact that we have staff vacancies. We have personal savings due to staff vacancies. And we had a little bit of savings also in building operations from lower occupancy than we had projected for Q1. An Equal Access Fund, our expenses are a little bit higher, and that's really just due to the timing of when the Q4 2021 expenses, they were not, we were not able to pay those out until Q1 2022, since the contract that funds those expenses was not signed until January of this year. The Bank Settlement Fund and the Grants Fund, those differences are pretty significant. However, those are actual discrepancies that unfortunately we, we, we have in the budget. We did have a technical glitch when we were doing, when we were adopting our budget. The Office of Access and Inclusion input the numbers, but for whatever reason, we ran into technical issues and it did not get captured properly in the budget. And on the Grants Fund, that was, that was a mistake. We did not properly budget for that. So to correct that going forward, we will submit a budget amendment to make sure that those large discrepancies or large variances don't reoccur in the coming quarters. And these are all grant-related. These mistakes are really all related for grants. And these are all passed through. We get the money, we get the funding, and then we pass through those, those proceeds to the subrecipients. So it really doesn't have a significant impact on our overall budget, since it's really all passed through. I wanted to just highlight that. Finally, I'll just highlight Admissions Fund. Admissions Fund also has a little bit of savings of about $300,000. And again, that's due similar to the General Fund, personal savings from staff vacancies. In Client Security Fund, we had a little bit less expenses than we had budgeted just due to payments, or a few applications, I should say, that were being processed than we had anticipated. And that is the, in a nutshell, the Q, the Q1 results so far.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya Chico. So those were three slides of 11 that were presented to the board in the Agenda Item and available to the public for review. Any other questions for the CFO?
Chair Durant, just to make a comment on the issue of whether or not it's, there's a legal obligation to review these, this report, not in close, not in consent. There's nothing in Bagley Keen that provides guidance on what items can be on consent and which, which items cannot. I think it's really within the discretion of the Chair and the Executive Director as they come up with the, the agenda. I think the idea is that it's possible that these reports can be considered in more detail in the Committee, in the Finance Committee, and brought to the board with a recommendation. And then it can be pulled off if more information is needed. But I don't think it's, there's no legal violation by doing it that way. I think, as I, what I'm hearing is more whether, you know, it could be best practices to make sure that everybody is aware of what's in the report as opposed to a legal obligation.
Thank you, Mr. Retana. Is there any questions or comments on that point or any other? So seeing that, I do, I do want to, I want to be careful of the implication that putting something on the consent calendar doesn't mean it hasn't been properly vetted by the staff and reviewed by each and every one of us as we're preparing for this meeting. Certainly, I support any trustee's prerogative to pull an item for further information. And, and I think that there was some great value to having this particular item pulled and these particular slides presented in a very public manner. But I, you know, this may be what Mr. Retana is getting to. The legal obligation to review all of the items on our agenda is, is there for all of us every time we meet. So just the implication that that is not being reviewed, I think, is something I'm not entirely comfortable with. Happy to entertain any further discussion or questions or comments before we take a motion.
If I may, my question is, what is the meaning of fiduciary responsibility of any board? And, you know, I've served on a lot of boards. Every single one of them has reviewed quarterly financial reports as a board. You're correct, Chair Durant, not in the detail of the committees, okay? But at least in terms of the broad, the broad strokes. What was the revenue? What were the expenses? What's the balance? Are we in the black? Are we in the red? Do we have anything to be concerned about? Are we fiscally sound, or are we in danger? And I serve on both the Audit and the Finance Committees, okay? So I, you know, I do my work on those committees to make sure that before it gets to the board, that it's, that, that it's in good shape. I, I just have never, ever, in any of my extensive experience, heard of a board that does not review an annual audit or a quarterly financial statement. That is commonly understood. My auditor for my own organization looks at board minutes. They want to know, did the board review the finance reports? As an Agenda Item, it makes them happy when they see it was done so. So I'm, I'm just saying, I think it's very important. I will keep insisting upon it.
Thank you, sir. I understand. And certainly, there's, I think there's a lot to be said for keeping auditors happy. So your points are well taken. If there's no further comment, can we have a motion?
I move to accept fifty-four-one forty-one. Approved.
Ms. Zarnia, I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Tony, a second by Sowell. Let me have their role, please.
Bratton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Narros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Selig?
Yes.
Shelby?
Aye.
So?
Aye.
Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Ten ayes, zero nays. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, trustees. That brings us to the end of the consent calendar and 3:45, which means we've been going for about an hour and three quarters. I'm going to ask for a five-minute bio break. So if we could reconvene here at 3:50, I would appreciate it. We'll see you shortly. Thank you, Madam Secretary. We're back. Thank you for the break. That brings us to item 702, remembering that item 701, 701 will be taken up tomorrow morning. 702 is Discussion of the Amendments to the 2022 to 2027 Strategic Plan. I see that Ms. Lyles has joined us. Welcome. Good to see you. Ms. Wilson, would you like to kick us off?
Sure. And I'm going to have Ms. Lyles just briefly walk the board through amendments to the plan that hopefully you will find are responsive to the feedback that you provided at the March meeting. Should you approve this version of the plan, we will consider it final, transition it into the digital format, and develop a corresponding operational plan. So Kelsey, take it away.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. You may recall that at the March Board Meeting, trustees voted to adopt the 2022-2027 Strategic Plan and also requested a few additional amendments. The Agenda Item has the clean and redline version to show the changes that have been incorporated to reflect that discussion. You will notice that most of the edits are actually at the implementation step level, and that is either to provide greater clarity or be more descriptive. I do also want to point out, though, that there's one change at the goal level. And this is, at the vision level, for, and this is for goal two. And it reads that "All California residents have access to high-quality, affordable, and culturally competent legal advice and services. And the intent behind this is to be more inclusive and in alignment with our DEI values." As we was saying, the next step is for staff to create an internal operational plan and also design a digital layout to post this plan to the State Bar website and make it accessible. We do have a proposed resolution statement, but first I wanted to open this item up to see if there were any questions on the redline track changes that were incorporated. Or comments.
Thank you, Ms. Lyles. Mr. Tony, I see you have a question or a comment.
Yes, I, you know, carefully reviewed all the redlines. I am thrilled with every change. Every change is a clear improvement over what we had before. I'm thrilled.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bratton, I'm sorry, Mr. Stallings?
Yeah, just to echo Mark Tony's comments, just, I really like the way the issues surrounding mental health and financial literacy were framed as goals. And I think that that's, this is a really important step that the State Bar can take, proactive step that the State Bar can take, to really be a clearinghouse of information to hopefully reduce the number of victims out there of attorney malfeasance. So just really happy with the end product. I really want to thank staff and our experts who walked us through this process. So thank you all.
Thank you, Brandon. Anyone else? Seeing none, they have a motion. Oh, this is information only. I'm not mistaken, Ms. Wilson?
There's a, there's a resolution.
Yes, I apologize.
Okay. We can see the resolution on the screen, please.
Yes, one moment.
While it's coming up, I'll just echo my colleagues' comments. It's gratifying to see this process come to a conclusion with a fine point the way it has on the red line. So thank you. There's a resolution on the screen. Is there a motion?
This is Brandon. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Stallings.
Tony will second.
Second by Tony. There's no further discussion. We'll have the role, please.
Bratton?
Yes.
Chen?
Yes.
Cisneros?
Aye.
Dela Cruz?
Yes.
Dylan? Selig?
Yes.
Shelby? So? Stallings?
Yes.
Tony?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, three absent. The motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. That brings us to item 703, Discussion Regarding Parliamentary Rule Changes. And I see several names attached to this item. I'm not sure who will be presenting.
Ms. Roberta Boomer is joining the meeting, and she'll start us off shortly.
Welcome.
Hello, Chair Durant, Vice Chair Stallings, trustees. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss with you today the recommendations that I've been working on for the past several months. I was asked by I was asked by Executive Director Wilson late last fall to do a review of policy practice and procedures, not only of the Board of Trustees, your committees, but also your state entity, your subentities. As it seemed that their different entities were using different practices and had different procedures. And so my first report was more administrative in nature and we looked at, I, I, I looked at consistency of agenda templates, minutes templates for all state bar entities. And meeting management, meeting preparation. Subsequent to that, and those are a lot of administrative matters that are internal for, for staff and for Director Wilson to, to implement. Subsequent to that, I, and as a result of some of the interviews that I had with some of you and with staff and with others, I was asked to look at some policy changes that could be made that would enhance meeting procedure and, and more smooth and effective meetings. And these had to do with what parliamentary procedure you use, public comment, the use of an abstention, the number of votes needed to take an action and the, the ability of the chair to participate in a vote. I understand that at the July meeting, we will get into public comment practices and procedures. And today, the items before you have to do with parliamentary procedure, abstentions, the number of votes needed to take an action and ability of the chair to participate in a vote. I will, I know that you've received my report, so I will not read it to you. I know that being read to death is a horrible way to die. Roberta, it sounds like maybe you're wrestling papers near the microphone. So maybe, and we could try to avoid that because there's a lot of static. Okay, thank you. All right, so I know that the trustees currently use Robert's Rules of Order and some have opined that it was Rules of Order better for a day long gone. It is hundreds of pages as long and it is, unless you're an expert in Robert's Rules of Order, it is very easy to get completely mired down and confused by Robert's Rules of Order. I looked at other Rules of Order, including that used by the state legislature Masons. There's Sturgis Rules of Order, there's multiple Rules of Order, I didn't look at every single one. But it was suggested that I, we look at Rosenberg's Rules, Rules of Order, which, which was designed by a Superior Court Justice from Yolo County. And it's a very simplified Rules of Order that's very easy to understand and follow. And, and that is my recommendation today is that, is that you consider adopting Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Moving on, the use of abstention and recusal. I wanted to clarify that I come from a world where the, any policy body member is required to vote on every matter put before it. So either an a or an a. And that there are no abstentions. I come from a world where I believe that it is the fundamental duty of a policy body member to participate in the votes. That said, I do understand that there are certain conditions under which members may wish to abstain. But that's an item for you to discuss today. That ties into the number of votes it needs, an item needs to pass. And there are a number of models that could be used and a majority of those present in voting. Your policy body manual is silent on the number of votes that need to, the number of votes to determine the outcome of a vote. And so pursuant to Roberts, when there, when there is no mention of it, you do follow the rule of present in voting. There is also, of course, a majority of those present in the meeting, a majority of the entire policy body, and then the hardest one of all is the majority of the fixed membership. So we thought that today would be an opportunity for you all to discuss how you want to conduct your meetings, what procedures you wish to follow just in general, also with regard to voting. And and I think that will be about it. So Louise, I guess I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. And because the proposals we will discuss today not only impact the board, but also the subentities, we wanted to inform you that we have sent circulated a survey to all of the subentity leadership to get their thoughts and feedback on these recommendations. And as of today, we have only received three responses to that survey. And now I would like to turn it over to Vice Chair Stallings and Trustee Tony for your thoughts.
All right, thank you so much, and I almost feel like Mr. Tony should go first as he was driving force behind looking at this, at Rosenberg's rules and really bringing some continuity to the way the state bar conducts its business, including subentities. So Mark, would you like to take, take over and then I'll offer some closing thoughts?
Thank you, Trustee Stallings. I, you know, the practice of democracy is something I've done since high school when I was in Model United and that's where I learned Robert's Rules of Order. And I became very good at it, I can, I can do it backwards, forwards, the pyramid of presidents, all that fun stuff, okay? At the same time, it is not a easy way to conduct business because most people, it, it, there's just too much stuff. I, I will tell you, I actually purchased the 12th edition of Robert's Rules to prepare for this discussion. And I was so relieved after reading the six pages of Rosenberg Rules that it's, it's really the Cliff Notes, or if you will, it's, it's kind of like Robert's Rules for Dummies. And I like it very much because of that. And, you know, you don't, you know, it, it's something that everybody can participate in. And actually, to, to, to be able to, I think, to have good governance, it helps for every single member to be conversant and familiar with the ground rules. The rules of engagement, if you will, and six pages is just so much easier. I like the clarity in which the Rosenberg says that chairs can vote. I never understood why a chair didn't vote here, I think chairs should vote, I think it's a good thing. So I like that, I like that element of it and the clarity with that. And I, I, I just found it very useful. So I had never heard of Rosenberg Rules before it was sent to me as part of this process. And, and I'm just really pleased with the, that's something I feel like can wholeheartedly recommend. The two other issues, if I can just comment on, I, I do have some thoughts on. The and, and it has to do with what represents the will of a body. That's the concept, I think, of when you are adopting a policy, what represents the will of the body. We had a meeting a few months ago, may, it may have been in February, where there was an issue before the board, there were nine people present, okay? And the vote was three yes, one no, five abstentions. Okay, now, under Robert's Rules, which we currently operate under, that motion passed because it was present and voting. And under Robert's Rules, the abstentions are not counted as a vote at all. They're discounted in the vote count. So that was a three s, one no. And I, I really have to question, does a vote like that truly represent the will of the state bar, of the will of anybody, any, you know, governmental body? Okay, and I, when it comes to the issue of what represents the will of the body, I do like what the state legislature does. They have a majority of the body. That means you need 41 votes in the Assembly and 21 votes in the Senate. It doesn't matter how many open seats there are, okay? Six open seats in the Assembly because people got appointed at this and resigned that and what, what, what have you. It still takes your 41, okay? Now, under that, it would take seven, if we were to adopt that, that would take seven out of 13. Well, what does that do? One, it makes it harder to adopt rules, okay, to adopt policies. I think policies should be hard to adopt. I think that they, the worst policies are policies that have, you know, almost a 50-50 split. You, you actually want to work towards consensus. And you can't get to seven, it means, in my opinion, that the policy is not ready for prime time. That we gotta go back to the drawing board and we gotta work harder to come up with something that we all feel good about, or at least the vast majority of us feel good about. Also doing that would put pressure on these appointing agencies, okay? Um, yeah, we have obligations, but guess what? The appointing agencies, and we've got two open seats now. It would put pressure on them to do their appointments. They got obligations too, okay? The Supreme Court, the State Senate, they got obligations, they give us a hard time. It's a two-way street when it comes to obligation. And so, but in the case of that, that is what gives abstention meaning. Because what an abstention means in a situation like that is it effectively is a no, but a no that's not a poke in the eye, okay? A no vote, particularly against a motion that a chair supports, a no vote is generally considered, at least in the state legislature, they consider it a poke in the eye. And the way to, so, so in other words, there's a hard no and a soft no. And a abstention actually is a soft no. A no, you know, it's still a no. But it also represents a signal that I'm movable, okay? I, my, my vote is subject to change, okay? I, I, I'll, you know, so that if you don't get the majority, if you don't get, you know, the, the majority of the body, then you know where to go get your votes, okay? It's in the abstention, because the no's are kind of like, no. So, so anyway, those, I, I, I'm just giving you my, my, my sense of how I've seen things work and how I think they work the best in terms of what represents the will of a body.
Thank you, Trustee Tony. Trustee Cisneros, your hand is up.
Oh, I just wanted to get my name on the roster for making comments, but I, I certainly wouldn't want to cut off Trustee Stallings, who I think was gonna talk about their work on this.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether you had a question. Is that the same for you, Mr. Selag? Yep. Brandon, back to you.
Yeah, so I just, I, I think the agenda item is pretty clear and Mr. Tony's comments up into the number of votes needed to take action. I think apart from that issue, there was a broad consensus on the work and the recommendation of Ms. Boomer. And I think that that passing this item will be a good, be a good thing for board governance. I am curious to see what our subentities, what sort of comments they, they submit. So I guess I'm hesitant to, to have too much of a full discussion today and really want to, to kind of hear their un, you know, their untainted opinions. So I, I'll reserve a majority of my opinions regarding the vote issue for later on and maybe perhaps until we get the subentities input on that issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stallings. Okay, Jose, now you're up.
Sure, thank you. First of all, I want to thank our trustees, Ms. Boomer, and all the staff that have worked on this. I think this is a very important issue for us to be considering and to sort out in order to be successful moving forward. I, I do just want to pass along some thoughts, but of course remain open to conversation because I think there are some very important items in here. And Trustee Tony, I, I do have to give my thoughts on a couple of the items you raised. I've never been in a situation, and I've been for over two decades, on boards and commissions and public bodies and all that, and I've never had the opportunity to vote an abstention. I honestly don't know what the purpose of it is. If we're all here to do good work, give, give our best participation, we should be prepared, ready, and, and full of questions, but ready to make a decision on a matter that comes before this body. And I believe that that, those, those opinions show up in either yes or no votes. And I'm particularly concerned about the concept of a soft no. I, I, I really don't understand what a soft no is. I think a no should be a no. And, and we're all, we're all grownups and we all deserve to hear what people's opinions are. I would even hope that no's could be swayable if they had more information and if they explained what their issues were. But having a, in the, in the matter you discussed, where there were, I think, some num, large number of abstentions, that in, in the proposal would have ended up in that, that item failing, I think that those abstentions deserve to be no's. If, if the point is to, is to block a, 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 a matter from proceeding or being approved, then that, a, a no is a no, a no should be a no. And that's how you block something from going, not going forward or not being approved. So I, I, I would love to hear the concept of what the purpose of an abstention is, particularly if it's meant to be anything other than a no, which it sounds to me, and at least in your description, that was what you were kind of describing it as. And in my opinion, I really would rather see people voting yes or no and being clear about that so we could continue to get to better outcomes. I do also have a concern about the number of votes required for an item to pass. I see this, like I see many boards and commissions, is appointees to this Board of Trustees do this out of huge largesse. They are to be congratulated and, and, and they have very, very busy lives. They have very, very busy other obligations. The time they spend here is rare and precious, and sometimes they just can't accommodate every meeting. That is far different from somebody who's, you know, elected to a permanent position as an elected official, somebody who serves as our San Francisco Board of Supervisors do as both elected officials and full, full-time paid representatives of their electorate. They have nothing to do but show up there and therefore they, they do have a hard, a hard, fast number of, you know, seven votes, the majority of their 11-member body are required to pass any item, but they're all always there. Unless they're very, very, very ill, they are always there. They're, the voters are always filling those seats and those people are always there. That's not the case here. We oftentimes have people that can't make our, our meetings. We have, as you, as we've all seen, seats that go unfilled. And I very much am concerned about us getting to a place where we could get very little or maybe none of our business done for this very important, uh, uh, body of, of work of protecting the public, this body needs to function. It needs to be able to, to do its work, work with the staff, the great staff here, and deliver safety for the members of our, of our state. So I very much would like to see something that's not a fixed majority of vote, of voting number, whether seats are filled or not, but rather something that's more workable. And, and I believe that would probably be a majority of those present and voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Mark, you're up next. Mark Bratton, I'm sorry. You're on mute, Mark.
Sorry, I kind of agree with Jose in a number of reasons. One of the things is that this, this body is regulating, and I'll speak just for myself, an industry of which I am a member, I am licensed, I am a licensee. And so unlike a legislature or some other body that may be regulating the entire state or the entire country or something, there is the there is the high potential that I will have a conflict of interest in any issue that comes before the board. In fact, you've heard me having to abstain. I think there's not abstain, recuse myself. I think there's a difference between a recusal and an abstention. I don't know if you need specifically grounds to abstain, but when I can't vote, it's because I can't. It's because I have a conflict of interest in whatever the issue is before the board. I don't want that vote to be taken no. As a matter of fact, on two of the last occasions that I had to recuse myself, I really wanted to vote yes on those items. And I would be very upset if it turned out that because I had to recuse myself, my vote was different than what I really wanted. I also think there's a difference when you have a board of this size where you have half of, almost half at least, of the board members having that problem, right? It's a little different than twenty-one of forty-one people making it with soft no votes and that type of thing. This is, this is a much smaller board with a higher potential of having those types of problems. So I'm not sure that those analogies will apply to us. And I agree with Jose. I think there is probably, you can't just pick over half of the total number of members that are on there because of the nature of us trustees and the fact that a number of us are appointed by the Supreme Court. So those are my thoughts right now.
Thank you, Mark. Sean?
Yeah, so I have a few comments. Let me ask a question first of the trustees who are presenting this. Are you asking for action today or is this just a discussion item? Just discussion? Okay, good, thank you, because it's kind of a big thing I would like to think about a little bit more. So I just, I think I have three observations. The first is I think that generally, actually, I can't remember a time when this board has gotten tied up in knots over Robert's Rules of Order, which is a good thing. Michael Colentano, I think when he was president or chair, he was the only person to serve in both offices, once gave us a presentation on Robert's Rules of Order and other formalities about meetings. And one of the observations he made was that a sign of a poorly functioning board is when Robert's Rules of Order become really important and start determining the outcome of matters because people are doing all kinds of maneuvers. I think generally, we have applied very basic principles of Robert's Rules, although based on the memo, I think some of our basic precepts may be a little off technically. So I don't think that has been a huge problem, but the idea of a simpler set of rules, I was originally reluctant, I guess, because I can be a traditionalist sometimes. We have had non-attorney members of the board express sometimes frustration about Robert's Rules and they feel outmaneuvered by lawyers. So having a much simpler system might be, might be good. Because, so I'll just leave it at that. The other two points are, I agree with Jose, the last part he talked about, about not requiring a majority of the full board to vote in favor of a proposal for it to pass. I think that could cause paralysis. It could cause the board to be unable to act in certain situations when it really needs to act. So I'm definitely not in favor of that. As far as the chair voting, I have, having been chair and having been on the board for quite a while, I do, I have some thoughts about that. So I like the idea that the chair, you know, right now we operate on the principle that the chair only votes in the event of the need to break a tie. And there was one time when it didn't happen, but I feared I was watching a situation unfold where I wouldn't be able to vote and I would have been the deciding vote on something. Turned out that it didn't play out that way, but that would be kind of a perverse outcome. But on the other hand, in general, I think it is a beneficial practice for the chair not to vote because chair, you know, should, chair doesn't have to be perfectly neutral and can certainly comment on proposals in front of the board because we do operate in a relatively informal fashion. But it is beneficial for the chair to remain above the fray as much as possible. And when I was chair, there were a number of times when we had highly controversial matters in front of us that I was glad that as chair I didn't have to vote on it because there wasn't a tie. And it just sort of helped maintain the role as chair presiding officer, acting in a neutral way to facilitate the discussion. So I think it's a good practice, but it shouldn't be legally binding. And so the chair should, I think we should adopt a, I don't know what you call it, guideline? Remember Pikes of the Caribbean, guidelines versus rules? That, you know, generally speaking, the chair should refrain from voting unless in the event of a tie, but the chair has discretion to deviate from that when he or she thinks it's appropriate. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Sean. Any other input from any of the trustees? Being the chair, I won't speak. I'm just kidding. So this was for information only. I will, I think, I'm hoping, express on behalf of the entire board. Many thanks to Ms. Boomer and trustees Tony and Stallings for having put your minds together for this important, important work. We're not done yet and I look forward to hearing what representatives of the sub-entities have to say in their leadership because they do a vast amount of work for the agency as well, for the organization. So if there are no other questions or comments, we will move on to the next agenda item. Look forward to finishing this up in July. Mr. Selig, your hand went up.
Sorry, that was a mistake, sorry.
Okay. All righty, thank you, folks. Let's move on to item number seven oh four, which is follow-up regarding the state audit, two thousand twenty-two dash oh three zero and implementation steps. This is a presentation by Ms. Wilson and Mr. Cardona, who I'm hoping will be let in very shortly. There he is. Welcome, George.
Thanks. So I think I'm going to start off, so he is nodding, so I'll say yes. So if it's okay, I'll share my screen, put up some slides and walk through kind of where we are in responding to the state audit and what we still have to do and then end with kind of some timeframes for when we're going to do the rest of that. So give me one second. So hopefully you can all see my screen now. Seeing nods.
There it is.
So basically, the state auditor, the report came out April fourteenth. It laid out a set of recommendations across, I grouped them into four groups. Group dealing with our practices and policies relating to investigations and case closures, conflicts of interests, our external audit process, in particular for the random audit of closed cases that we do twice a year. And then a final set of recommendations regarding client trust account violations and bank reportable actions, which are the actions, the complaints, the actions we get forwarded from banks notifying us of insufficient funds transactions on client trust accounts, which is what the bank REs are. So I'll walk through these in order. So basically with respect to the first group, the first recommendation was that we tighten up our policies relating to our use of non-public measures. In other words, things other than public approvals, suspensions, probation, disbarment, the public disciplinary actions. Tighten up our policies and procedures for using non-public measures, including private approvals and alternatives to disciplines such as warning letters and resource letters, things issued prior to the filing of the notice of disciplinary charges. So we are in the process of putting together a policy that will specify both criteria for when people are eligible for that and then criteria for exercising discretion in proceeding in that way when someone is eligible under the criteria. And we expect to have that policy in place. The timeframe they set was October. Hope to have that in place well before then so that we have something that we can point to, at least some, have some experience with before we have to report to the state auditor. So the second, the second recommendation had to do with withdrawn complaints. And this was again, a recommendation that we adopt a new policy regarding withdrawn complaints. The concern here was that we should not be closing cases simply because someone who has filed a complaint subsequently decides that they no longer wish to pursue that complaint. And in part, this spun out of the Tom Girardi investigation. There were a number of instances looked at in that situation where people had filed complaints and then subsequently withdrew them potentially because they'd worked out arrangements in which they had received money from Tom Girardi to withdraw their complaint or other reasons. And so we agreed this is something that shouldn't be done. We actually issued a new policy making this clear in February while the audit was ongoing once this was brought to our attention. We've also updated some of the closing codes in our case management system to make sure that our closing codes make clear that closure should not be based on non-cooperation, but rather if someone chooses to cooperate on a determination that without their cooperation, we simply can't generate sufficient evidence. What we still need to do is come up with a system for monitoring compliance with this to ensure that that policy is being followed. That's something we're working on. One of the ways we think that we will likely be doing it is some kind of random check of closed cases specifically for compliance with this policy. It may be that we need additional resources for that and that's something that we'll be probably talking about in the future. The third recommendation was, one recommendation relating to discipline in other jurisdictions. In particular, a recommendation that we should notify the public on our website when other jurisdiction determine that an attorney who's licensed in California presents a substantial threat of harm. This is in fact the subject of the next board agenda item, which is a recommendation regarding certain consumer notifications that we would post in certain circumstances when someone is subjected to a disciplinary action in another jurisdiction, even before that disciplinary action in the other jurisdiction becomes final and enables us to file a notice of disciplinary charges here. So we'll be talking about this in connection with the next agenda item. The other recommendation here was to make sure that we use the American Bar Association's database. The American Bar Association remains, maintains a disciplinary database that keeps track of jurisdictions can submit to the data bank discipline that they have imposed on attorneys and the data bank has markers to indicate where those attorneys are licensed. And it will then generate email notifications to other jurisdictions to let them know when an attorney licensed in their jurisdiction has been subjected to discipline in another jurisdiction, if it's reported to the ABA. We have taken action already in response to this. Our staff have access to that data bank and we have staff who have signed up to receive those notices from the data bank so that in fact we will get notice if the other jurisdiction provides notice to the ABA for those lawyers that are flagged as California licensees. So I think we've already addressed this recommendation. The next one had to do with patterns of similar complaints. One of the concerns that the audit flagged as they were here was that there was confusion within OCTC as to the appropriateness of looking at prior similar complaints. We in fact addressed that while the audit was ongoing. We issued a new policy making clear that attorneys could look at prior complaints and should look at prior complaints to see if there were patterns that would weigh into our decisions as to whether to proceed with additional investigation. This is limited by the rule that was put in place. We've maintained the rule that was put in place where complaints that are closed more than five years remain outside, they're archived and people can't look at them. But within that five-year period, people should be looking at prior closed complaints as a mechanism to see if there are patterns that suggest either that the new complaint should be pursued or potentially that we should go back and reopen some of those prior complaints in light of the current complaint, if there is in fact a pattern. So we've put that in place. The second issue there was how do we identify patterns of complaints? We file charges and our case management system tracks charges, roughly six hundred some different charges because of all the different rules we operate under in statutes. Ron Pi and Araya put together a kind of unifying system to try and categorize those many different charges into, I can't remember if it's twenty-three or twenty-five categories, grouping those charges to make it easier for us to identify those patterns. That categorization system is in place. What we still need to do is implement that categorization across our case management system so that we categorize all of our closed and currently open complaints and then come up with a mechanism for allowing attorneys who are making decisions in cases to get that categorization. And we're in the process of working on that right now. We think we can do that using some reporting systems that we have in place and hopefully we'll have that in place sometime again in the near future. So those were the recommendations regarding kind of investigations and case closures. The next were a series of recommendations relating to conflicts of interest. The first related to the accuracy of the information. So right now, all attorneys and investigators fill out conflict of interest forms where they identify lawyers with whom they have certain relationships. And that information is maintained in a database. And I believe many of you fill out those forms as well. That information all goes into a database. We have a database of attorneys who have been flagged as having relationships with the state bar or state bar employees such that there are potential conflicts. The first issue that came up was that in the course of the audit, that information from that database needs to flow into our case management database so that we have the information identifying those people. We found some technical issues in that. We are working on that right now with the IT department. We've already corrected some of those technical glitches, but there is more to be done. And there's more to be done to make sure that we capture all of the information we need regarding the wide range of conflicts that can arise for people who have relationships with the state bar or state bar employees. And we're working right now with IT on kind of putting together a flow chart and then doing the technical work to get that in place and ensure that the information we have in our conflicts database is accurate and that that flows into our case management system. The next one related to an observation by the auditor that there were instances where people were closing cases, either A, despite the fact that a potential conflict had been identified without following the proper procedures to clear that conflict, or B, without checking to see if there was a conflict. So we are in the process of putting together a new policy that will implement new procedures requiring everybody to check on conflicts, both at the time the case is assigned to them and then again prior to making a decision to close that case or to take disciplinary action on that case. The reason for those two is that there can often be a long time period between those two events and/or people can get reassigned. So this is an effort to ensure that such a conflict check is done before we take discretionary action on the case. That is in place. We've put the policy in place. We are implementing some changes to our case management system to add events so that people can enter that information in our case management system and we will have records to show that those conflict checks were done and the ability to check to identify any cases in which that was not done so that we can monitor this going forward. We do expect that as we put all of this into place, we may generate additional referrals to our special disciplinary trial counsel. So it is a good thing that you have approved at a lower rate someone who potentially can handle more of these referrals because we may generate more of these referrals. So those are the conflict ones. The next set of recommendations related to our external audit process. And these were all kind of directed at steps to ensure that that audit process is independent. As you know, we already do a random selection of cases. That random selection cases is overseen by Araya in connection with us. The one recommendation was to have the external reviewer be the one who ultimately works with Araya to select those random cases. We will put in place a policy to do that and have the external reviewer oversee the random selection process as opposed to us having any role in that. The second one, there was also a recommendation that we retain additional external auditors, not just have the same auditor so that there was not a potential for a relationship between the auditor and the state bar influencing the audit. We will be trying to put that in place, but again, that is something that we expect will cost more money and may require additional resources. And the final was to establish a formal oversight program and we're in the process of putting together a proposal for formal monitoring. We already now have in place a policy where we report to you on a regular basis about the audit and our response to that audit. We'll now be putting in place a process for us to report back to you at some time subsequent what we have done in response to that audit so that you can check to make sure and we'll have reports from us to ensure that we in fact have taken the steps we said we would take. And that will address this recommendation. The final set of recommendations related to client trust account violations and reportable actions from banks, and they related, and these recommendations were themselves They related in these recommendations were themselves in kind of two groups. One related to our de minimis closures of bank reportable actions. And so you understand what that is. We get reports from banks of non-sufficient fund transactions on client trust accounts. We treat those as de minimis when they are fifty dollars or less. So that's what a de minimis bank reportable action is. And we have had in place policies regarding how we treat those. And in some instances, we simply close those without taking any further action and without we have in the past closed them and not taken any further action, including not sending out letters advising the person of resources that they might want to look at to better manage their client trust account. In addition, there was some informal guidance that apparently was circulating in the form of an informal memo that had been generated in the past by someone who handled these cases that was not consistent entirely consistent with our formal guidance. So one of the recommendations was to discontinue use of that informal guidance. We have done that. We're in the process of putting together a new policy for de minimis closures that will try and focus on how we treat those, when we should close them, when we should take further action, what we should do. And we are also in the process of revising all of our closing letters so that when we do close those, we will still advise people of resources that can be available to them to assist them in the management of client trust accounts in the hope of avoiding future reportable actions and or future complaints by their clients. And finally, we'll have to put in place a system for monitoring compliance with these policies. Again, not entirely sure how what that will be. If it is a random check that we have to do after the fact, that again may require additional resources. With respect to client trust account complaints and non-de minimis reportable actions, the recommendation from the state auditor was that for all of those, we require our staff to obtain bank statements, the attorney's reconciliation and do an analysis to determine if the relevant transactions were appropriate in all cases. In our response to the state auditor, we explained why we differed with that, not so much in the concept that we need to improve how we handle these, but rather in doing that for every single one. So we are in the process of putting together a new policy that will lay out specific criteria defining the situations in which we should do what the state auditor recommended. Setting aside some other cases in which you know, we can solve the cases without doing that more easily and without the burden that it puts on attorneys to do generate and get the records and reconciliation to us. You're also, as I noted, for these as well, we'll be sending out all of our closing letters will include references to resources that people can look to for assistance in managing client trust accounts again to avoid future complaints. And then we will also need to put in place a system for monitoring compliance and figure out whether what resources we need for that. So that's a quick summary. This is the timeline. We are on a very short timeframe with respect to most of these. Most of the recommendations, they recommended that we have something in place by July of twenty twenty-two. In terms of the policies that need to be put in place, I think we can accomplish that. The ones that I flagged here in yellow are the ones where we think we will potentially need additional resources. Those are ones that if we in fact do need additional resources, our implementation may be delayed past July. And there were two, one that they pushed out to October of twenty-two, twenty-two. One that they pushed out to April of twenty twenty-three. The policy read non-public measures. We hope to have in place well before October twenty twenty-two and are actually shooting to get that done on the kind of same July, August timeframe. So that's the timeline. That's kind of where we are, where we're going. And I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you, George. Someone have any questions for George? Sonia.
Thank you so much for, thank you, George. Thank you so much for this report. There is one question that I have with respect to and providing notice about someone who is going to have, will have disciplinary action, but you have not completed it yet. Which uh, which one would that be? Where you will be, and now my, my concern there is the, you know, for that person, protecting that person as well as the, the, the consumer, the client to make the, the consumers to make sure that if, if you're still trying to prove that he has done, he has, you know, done anything wrong, that he will not be he will, that, that, that you know, announcing or rather providing information about his disciplinary action would hurt that person. And at the same time, I know, I understand that you would like to make sure that, that the public is already aware of what's happening, but, but for that person to be, you know, still being considered for disciplinary action. George, which one was that, was that?
That was, let me go back to that for one second. I'll go back to that and then pop that up. And actually, I think it might be better to put this off. This is actually the next agenda item. Seven oh five, because this relates to the consumer alert for disciplinary actions in other jurisdictions. And putting up a consumer notice even before those are completed. So here's the slide I had. Let me get this up.
Yeah, I was, I was a little bit more concerned about that, you know, just making sure that where, you know, we could also hurt that person if it's not fully vetted yet. But at the same time, I'm
Yeah, so this is the slide and this is, this was the recommendation. And this is actually the next agenda item. As you'll see, what we're recommending there is a consumer notice that would notify the public of a disciplinary action in another jurisdiction, even if that's an interim action, but the consumer notice would have a caveat. It would advise people that that's not final and that the attorney should be presumed innocent until proven guilty effectively.
That's, 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 that's it. Yeah. But thank you for that. Making sure that there is all the caveat and everything just also. I definitely for me, it's alerting the public. It's really, really important.
Yeah, that's the same approach that we take to our notices of felonies and criminal charges. We usually put up a caveat advising if that's, if they're not complete, that they're that they need to be presumed innocent until the, the, the action is completed. So it's consistent with how we've done other consumer notices.
Wonderful. Thank you. I have a second question on the resources that you have highlighted. Are you thinking, talking about a person or so many people, number of people doing the same monitoring for all of that? It would that be resources that will be taking away from, you know, how we have resources that we need for you know, getting, looking at the backlog and getting the backlog really, you know, working on the backlog. Will this, will this resource be taking away from that? I, I know it's going to be in addition to that, but how many would that, would, would the monitoring of all those monitors that you have there that you have resources in monitoring and all that, would that mean a number of people?
It, it would be a number of people. It would be a number of people. And in our response to the state auditor, we laid out the number of people. It's also some capital improvements potentially to our computer systems. And in our response to the state audit, we laid out the number of people and also the estimated cost of the one-time improvements. With a strong suggestion in the response that, you know, ideally they would give us additional resources so that we didn't have to pull those resources from our resources that are used now for everything that we do now. In other words, investigations. So that is our request. And I suspect that may be part of an ongoing discussion with the legislature in terms of of resources to make that available.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Tony.
This is a very, I really appreciated the audit. And I think we learned a lot from the audit. And I very much appreciate the chief trial counsel, Cordona's report and responsiveness to the audit. And the fact that so many steps have already been taken and that there's a timeline for the majority of the steps to be taken. I think that's very encouraging. I have a couple of questions. This sounds basic, but I just want to make sure. Does California the, the, the bar submit the lawyer disciplinary actions to the ABA database bank also?
Yes, my understanding is that we do.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I just wanted to give a comment. I know we're not deciding today, but I, one of the things I was happy to see in the audit is a questioning of this practice of private approvals and letters and other actions. It's something that I have never understood how that's going to protect the public if they don't know that the attorneys have had discipline taken against them. So I look forward to a more robust discussion about whether it's appropriate to continue them at all and focus more on public act, more, greater transparency to, to the public as part of our responsibility to protect the public.
Thank you, Mark. Any other questions or comments for the chief trial counsel? Okay, this was an informational item only, so that'll take us to our next item.
Slides, I'm sorry. No, it's really late, but I wanted to kind of use this update on the audit to update the board on the creation of in Ombuds, an office of the Ombuds. And it's tied into the audit due to this comment that you see here on the presentation on the screen and it is, was also posted to the agenda. That the state auditor did identify the need for, the potential need for an Ombuds person. They told us that they did not include that as a formal recommendation because in fact funding to establish such a position was already included in the twenty twenty-two budget adopted by the board. So I just wanted to give you a very quick update on the development of the Ombuds. This is a new, a brand new office and function for the state bar, one that has been recommended as far back as nineteen ninety, as far as I can see. So you can see there on the left-hand side, you know, what we're thinking at this juncture that the Ombuds will do and on the right-hand side, what they will not do. So importantly, in terms of what they will not do, they are not going to intervene in any pending disciplinary matter, not going to actually draft complaints for folks. But they will, on the other hand, be responsible for helping to facilitate a resolution of challenges that our clients, our customers are having with members of our staff or with processes. So they're really there, a dedicated resource to listen and to help navigate to a solution. The Ombuds will also be responsible for developing tools to assist consumers in filing complaints. So not helping, you know, Leah draft her complaint against attorney X, but providing templates and tools and checklist so that folks have a better chance of having their complaint understood by OCTC. There will also be some visibility on the analyses that the Ombuds does of trends over time. The Ombuds will be preparing an annual report that will be submitted to our stakeholders. And the Ombuds will have visibility and exposure to the audit committee as I will share in the next slide. So initially, I'm thinking that this position, because it's in office with only one person is going to focus on the discipline and admissions functions only. The vast majority of complaints that we receive as an agency have to do with discipline and admissions. So it makes sense to focus there. But want to acknowledge that we do receive complaints about other areas of the bar and we're just not stacked up at this juncture to handle them. In terms of where we are, there's a couple of outstanding issues. One is the reporting structure in Ombuds, you know, in the, in the best case scenario is, is very independent. And so obviously the sort of highest levels positions that we have here report to me or report directly to the board. The structure that I have come up with at this juncture is that reporting to me, but a dotted line to the audit committee. Another outstanding issue has to do with confidentiality. There are many different models for Ombuds. In a purely confidential model, though you limit the ability of the Ombuds to actually help people resolve their concerns because everything is entirely confidential. And so there, there's a line and a balance there. Another outstanding issue is the relationship to our whistleblower policy and other personnel policies. Because obviously the Ombuds is not investigating personnel complaints per se. These are process issues, compliance with policy and dealing with cases. Those are the kinds of questions that the Ombudsman will looking, will be looking at, but not things like harassment. Similarly, still outstanding is the relationship between the Ombuds and the external audit second look functions. And both of which were addressed in the recent state audit. George covered the external audit component. But the Ombudsman is not intended to be another level of appeal. Right? And is not going to be performing the work of the external auditor. So with respect to several of these outstanding issues, OGC has connected me with outside counsel who's helping to scan the lay of the land and all of the different Ombuds models that exist and come up with recommendations and assist with the finalization of the job description and the initial policies and procedures for the office. So I just wanted to share that with the board. It's really exciting for the bar to be moving in this direction, but it's, it's all new. So lots of, lots of questions there.
Are there any specific questions for Leah on the Ombuds program? Okay. Seeing none, I've got to just to check in here. It's five PM. We don't have a end time specific necessarily, but I do want to make sure that we're going to maintain our quorum for at least a little bit more as we do have several items to get through on the open session agenda. I don't think we're going to get to closed session this afternoon. Unless folks want to stay super late. The next item is seven oh five, proposed adoption of the consumer alert for interim actions in other jurisdictions to which the chief trial counsel alluded just a little while ago. Mr. Cardona.
Thanks. This is me again. So this is in response to the state audits recommendation. And again, that recommendation was that we should notify the public on our website when other jurisdictions have determined that an attorney who is also licensed in California presents a substantial threat of harm to the public. And the state auditor discussed that in the context of interim disciplinary actions in other jurisdictions. In other words, prior to final action in the jurisdiction, a finding that because of harm, they were going to impose something along the lines of what in our jurisdiction would be an interim suspension or an interim involuntary placement on ineligible ability to practice status. So we agree with that. In our system, the only time that we can file a notice of disciplinary charges based on out of state disciplinary action is once that becomes final. And under our rules, we have to attach to the notice of disciplinary charges. So in other words, if someone is disciplined in another jurisdiction and we are proceeding on the basis of that discipline, we only file our notice of disciplinary charges once that disciplinary action in the other jurisdiction becomes final and we have to attach to the notice of disciplinary charges. The final action from the other jurisdiction. So as I indicated, that leaves three areas where we would not be doing anything under our current rules. One, where there's an interim action of the type that the state auditor recommended. Two, where there's a disciplinary action in the other jurisdiction. In other words, where they've actually taken disciplinary action, but that action is still subject to appeal. And or three, the appeal in the other jurisdiction is complete, but we have not yet obtained a copy of that final order of discipline such that we can file our notice of disciplinary charges. So what we are suggesting is that there be a consumer alert in any of those three circumstances. A consumer alert that would let the public know by posting on the attorney's membership field in their web, state bar webpage, advising the public of the action that was taken, but coupled with a caveat that would vary depending on the precise circumstances. And we've laid out the precise language of this in the proposal to let consumers know that A, there has been this action in another jurisdiction. But B, what that action is and what the rights of the attorney are. In other words, it's still But B, what that action is and what the rights of the attorney are. In other words, it's still subject to appeal in the other jurisdiction and hence you should assume that they're. Innocent, B, it's final there, but here we still have to proceed and there are still proceedings here and you shouldn't assume that there's going to be discipline here until that disciplinary action is taken. So there are appropriate caveats attached to each of the three proposed warnings, consumer notifications that we are proposing. And those are in, the language of those are in the agenda items, so I won't repeat them. And I think in the interests of time, I can end there and simply if there are questions, I can try and take them.
Thank you, George. Any questions? Melanie.
Thank you. My question is, how does, how does this? In the work that the special discipline committee that they're doing and I, and I know how this came to be in terms of the audit. But how does this align with that work? Have they looked at these alerts at all? Yes.
So the answer, the answer to the second question is easier. No, I have not run these by the special discipline. I think you may mean the ad hoc commission on the discipline system.
Yes.
So no, I have not run these by that that commission. Obviously, if that's something that you would want me to do, I can do that. I brought it here because it is a direct recommendation from the state auditor with a fairly short timeframe.
I asked that. Thank you. I asked that because the work of the commission, I'm imagining and I could be incorrect. But I'm imagining that the people who are disproportionately being disciplined may see this consumer alert. In terms of things that have transpired and so I just. The board certainly is good at making decisions, but I think it's always great to have other stakeholders weigh in as well. So that's why I presented that. And sorry, I'm not as articulate at five o'clock as I was at twelve.
I understand. I will note that we've limited this to instances where another jurisdiction has actually taken some disciplinary action. So the only alerts that we're proposing are ones where another jurisdiction has either already taken an interim action. Or already taken a disciplinary action. So it's going to be an instance where there's actually been a finding in another jurisdiction. At some level, that some level of discipline is appropriate. So it is limited. It's not, it's not on the filing of disciplinary charges in another jurisdiction. It's where the other jurisdiction has actually taken some form of disciplinary action.
To my own education. And so when some other jurisdiction has taken some action, does it mean that this jurisdiction is about to take action and so we're giving a heads up? Or is it that we have not come to the end of our findings?
So we we can take, so if a Californ, I'll give you a concrete example. So let's say that a California attorney is also licensed in Arizona. And Arizona brings disciplinary charges and initiates their disciplinary process. Once the Arizona disciplinary process is in, so let's say the Arizona disciplinary process goes through and gets a final order of suspension. We can then pursue discipline here in California based strictly on that action, simply by submitting proof that that action has occurred and is a final. And that that action was for conduct that would be disciplineable in California. So those are the types of actions that we're talking about. We in Calif, we here in California, we can seek that type of discipline only once the disciplinary action in the other jurisdiction is final. That is, once it's been issued. Gone through the appellate process and a final order is issued. But there will be a judicial finding by the board or the bar or the court or whatever it is in the other jurisdiction. Previous to that, the discipline is warranted. And what we're saying is in those circumstances where another jurisdiction has made a finding. That discipline is warranted, we should post a consumer alert to let consumers know.